One, I'm going to call to order the Town of Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February 5th, 2019. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I don't know if my colleagues have had an opportunity to review them, but if you have, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 10, 2019, and January 31st, 2019.
So moved?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, items not on the agenda, hearing none. We're going to go to, before we, reserve fund transfer request for the country club. Good evening, sir. You're Mr. Whalen. Welcome.
Any other one?
We have.
So tonight, should I go? Okay. Tonight with the South Shore Country Club is requesting a transfer of $37,500 for reserve fund transfer for the purpose of doing work on the pool. A professional engineer did an inspection back in October and found several things that needed to be corrected for the pool to open for this season. So the estimates that we've received from vendors are approximately about $31,000, and there'll be additional engineering charges, and we also have put in a contingency as well in that number. So we're expecting the work to cost about $31,000 and a couple extra thousand dollars for work for the engineering firm. The good news is, if there is good news, that we did have another inspection in late December by the engineer, and they found that the foundation has remained stable. So the work will entail several different things because there is water that is infiltrating from the pool into the maintenance area, and to abate that, we'll have to do several different things, from caulking the pool where the gutter actually meets the pool. The gutter actually takes the water and brings it down into the filter. So we'll remove that caulking, total, all the caulking will be removed, and new caulking will be put in place. We'll check all of the gutter to make sure that everything is sealed within the gutter as far as welds and things of that nature, and then test all the water lines to ensure that all the drain lines are good and that there isn't any leaking or any issues with those lines as well. And then one final thing that they'll do is while there is some spalding of the cement of the gunite surface area in the shell itself, that will be also corrected. So the good news is too is that the pool shell itself is, the integrity of the pool shell is fine. We've had the water filled in there since the operation of the pool stopped in late or early September. We have not had any issues with water going down into the maintenance area. So we feel that if we take all these corrective steps with the pool and also do the stabilization of the foundation work, additional stabilization down in the maintenance area, that if we do all those, that we should be able to open, you know, this year. We're very confident that we'll be able to do that. Of course, the biggest wild card would be that the foundation itself, as I said, we've done, you know, monitored the foundation cracks, and throughout the year, we do it about every two months, and during the season, we do it every month to ensure that the cracks in the foundation are stabilized, and they have been.
Questions from my colleagues?
Well, Kevin, I mean, I feel like you're, unfortunately for you maybe, but fortunately for us, you're the right man in the right place at the right time with the, you know, kind of experience that you bring to the table with your work at DCR. And so, you know, I feel like, you know, to me, listening to you talk about the structure itself being stable, the fact that there's no leaking going on currently sort of brings back the, brings back the conclusion that it is the gutter issue that could be stabilized.
Right, and I feel very confident that if we do all of this, that we can abate the problem. I mean, we're kind of working backwards from what could cause the problem and, you know, taking, testing everything that's there, but also, you know, anything that possibly could, like the, you know, like the caulking, which I think is probably the main problem between the gutter and where the cement actually meets. That's probably, it's, you know, that gets brittle and old, and that's where you'll have some infiltration of water. So we're doing all those things. So I think we're taking a conservative approach as far as making sure that we're testing everything to, so when we do get the, you know, the funds and we get a vendor in there that we can take care of the issue.
One final question would just be timing. You know, I would assume that this, the timing is somewhat sensitive to make sure that we can have the pool tested and filled and ready to start the season.
So I've already talked to one vendor that we've used in the past, but I'll get two additional vendors, and we'll move on it as quickly as possible. I asked Tom, Mr. Mayo, to try to expedite this as quickly as possible because we want to make sure that we get on the calendar for whatever vendor wins the award.
And Mary, maybe you can help me with this. If we vote a reserve fund transfer to the country club, does that stay on the books as something that they pay back to the town? Do you know?
It could, yeah.
Okay.
The other debt that they've had in the past is on the books, so it could.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just one last piece, just to update everybody. The other component to this is that the Rec Commission is looking to hire lifeguards. So they need to know sooner than later. And what they've told us is that if this reserve fund transfer's request is processed, then they would feel comfortable hiring the lifeguards, understanding that the work would get done, and that the pool would be able to open in the season, so.
Right, because the pool, I mean, the engineer has, you know, if the work is not done for the pool and the water is not abated, the engineer has stated that the pool cannot open.
Right, and I mean, you know, we consider reserve fund transfers all the time. Part of it is, it needs to be an unforeseen expense. I think that falls into this category, so I think it meets the standard, and it seems like a prudent approach.
I would also say that, you know, you can't earn revenue, you know, to remit the town without a pool being open, so, you know, to me, not doing that is, you know, just silly, and it's not utilizing an asset. I also appreciate the ongoing monitoring of the situation. I think you and the committee are just attending to this very carefully, and I know you've got some long-term plans that are also in the works. I appreciate that you're balancing both the short and the long term.
Right. I think, you know, everyone knows that the pool is so vital to all the sports camps that happen up at the country club as well. I mean, we have like the golfers, the, you know, staff program, you know, all the, you know, the tennis camp, so all those, it's such a vital part of the camp offering is the pool, where the kids get to go into the pool for, you know, a couple times a day, you know, during the summer months.
I have a question. How long do you anticipate this repair will add to the life of the pool?
So I think, as I mentioned...
Without it, you can't use it, but with it, what?
So I think, so I think it goes back to the real, the question really, as long as the foundation is stable, I think we probably can get two or three years, you know? You know, but it's all about the foundation, stabilization of the foundation. If the stabilization, the foundation is stable over the next two or three years, I think this work will, you know, maintain the integrity of the shell and the inner workings of the pool, you know? So I think we should be able to get a few years out of it, you know, moving forward. But it's all up to whether the foundation remains, you know, in its current state.
At the risk of a silly question, does movement of the water inside the pool affect the stability of the walls?
No, and I think that's why we have the engineer. And so what, the reason why the water is an issue is because you have rebar in the pool, and the chlorine, which is in the water, is corrosive to the rebar. So when the water goes through, it probably exacerbates the, you know, the foundation, which already is like, has significant cracks, which we've alleviated with doing Kevlar blankets and things of that to strengthen it.
This is a lining you're putting in?
No, so it's, we have a gunite shell, so it's much like you would have in many of the backyard pools. So it's, so what we would be doing is the gutter is a stainless steel gutter that goes around the perimeter of the pool, which collects the water when the water comes over and drains down into the filter system.
Okay.
So underneath the gutter where the stainless steel gutter meets the cement, there's a caulking of about one inch. And we'd remove all that caulking, put new caulking in. It's much like, you know, doing caulking around your tub or something of that nature to make, ensure that, you know, water does not get into the behind the tile or what have you. So it's very similar to that. The other things that we would be doing, again, are testing all the water lines, so the drain lines, the filter return lines, and things of that nature as well. So it's, and then there's cement which is peeling from the gunite, we'd take care of, in addition, we'd take care of those issues as well. And the final thing is the stabilization of the maintenance area foundation. There is some cracks down there. They have not moved, but because that's where the water was leaking, the engineer is requesting that we do the stabilization, which is additional Kevlar blanket to the foundation of the structure with staples in it, which is what the engineer has requested.
Where the water comes out as opposed to where it goes in though, right?
Yeah, so that's where it's, so where it's leaking, that's the, I guess, the path of least resistance where it's coming out. So what we're trying to do is to, so the, right, so what I've said is, you know, as I said, as the pool has not been operating, we have not been getting any water downstairs into the maintenance area. So obviously, it's, you know, when we had a significant amount of rain, obviously this fall, the pool almost filled up just by, you know, just by the amount of rainfall, and we did not have any infiltration of water downstairs. So that's the good news, I think. So it's, we know that the problem is with the pool shell and when the pool is operating. So what we have to do is work backwards, and everything that's possible that kind of could, could cause a leak, we're checking with this additional money, we're checking those, all those different avenues where the water could infiltrate down into the maintenance area to make sure that we take corrective action.
Questions from the public? Motion?
Motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the South Shore Country Club R&amp;M Pool's account in the amount of $37,500.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda.
So we have the, a couple of articles. I would recommend that we hold off on Article H. I'm still doing a little bit of work on that in terms of being able to explain it successfully to you folks and for AdCom's purposes, so I would ask that we hold off on that at least until Thursday, if not, if not next week, but...
About the home rule petition.
So the home rule petition. I will turn that over to your colleague to your left.
That'd be, that's me. So you might recall, for the last year or so, the three of us have been talking about the possibility of providing targeted tax relief to needy seniors in town. And over the course of this summer, I worked with a team from the assessor's office, the treasurer's office, elder affairs, and the town accountant's office, along with support from the board of selectmen's office, to consider special legislation to provide for a means-tested senior property tax exemption. And that's what's before you tonight in Article II. So Article II is based on special legislation, pardon me, that other municipalities have passed, along with, along with, the Association of Assessors, I think, also came out with draft legislation along the same line. Because it's no secret, I think, that for our, for our elderly residents on a fixed income with a house, even a modestly valued house in this town, you know, our valuations are high, we try to keep our tax rate as responsible as we possibly can, but it's that squeeze, I think, that really begins to limit the choices of needy senior citizens in town. And so the question is, well, what can we do about it? The state legislature actually considered a bill prior to closing out their session last term that would have allowed municipalities to sort of opt into state legislation. You know, we do that occasionally, where the state will come up with a format, and we just say, yeah, we'd like that to apply to us. Unfortunately, that legislation was not passed by the legislature, but that's okay, because my team and I feel like we came up with a better, a better version anyway. So in order to effect a property tax exemption, you have to actually go to the state, to the Commonwealth, because the town by itself has really very few, very few tools to affect the taxation of its residents pursuant to the property tax assessment. So again, Article I captures a property tax exemption that is based on state circuit-breaker rules, and what state circuit-breaker rules do is essentially combine a maximum assessed value of real estate with a maximum income level. And at that point, the state will work toward achieving a 10% level of property tax to income. So the idea is, you shouldn't be paying more than 10% of your income in property tax. But the formula includes assets that you own, and assessed value of your house, and your income. So it's a combination of those factors that would allow you to be eligible for the state circuit-breaker program. What we've done here is say, those are the same folks that we'd like to give a break to as well. And so we are basing our eligibility on the fact that the folks who could apply would have received in the prior year a circuit-breaker tax exemption. So in other words, we're, we're taking the guesswork and sort of the accounting work out of it. We're saying, the state has said you're eligible for this benefit at the state level, we're going to match that, that state benefit and provide you with an exemption here in Hingham. How does that get paid for, one might ask? Well, this, this version that we would put before town meeting has two options to make up for that property tax exemption. So, you know, anytime you're giving somebody else a break, that money's got to come from somewhere to fund our budget. And so in this situation, the amount of the exemption, the aggregate amount of the exemption would get shifted to the balance of the tax levy. So everybody else in town would pick up a piece of this tax exemption. Or, at the discretion of the board of selectmen, which would be done annually, we could identify a funding source, so we could take money from, say, meals tax and put it into the levy to cover the amount of the exemption that we would afford to our, our senior residents. Sue Nickerson did some work on this along with Gene to figure out, well, sort of based on an average household and based on an average valuation, what does that tax shift look like? And really, the maximum amount of the tax shift at the higher end of our property values, and jump in if I'm overstating this, is about 50, $50, $55, something like that. So when it decreases with lower property values for people remaining in the levy, if you follow me. So 50 to $56 would be the maximum amount that anyone could see in an increase in their tax bill by affording our senior residents a break on their taxes. And that's, that's if we use a tax shift, but we could also, under this act, identify a funding source.
Do we know, Karen, how, so in a, in a given year, if this was implemented, how many dollars in aggregate would be shifting? Do we have a sense of that?
Yep, so Sue's done that analysis. They're about, according to Barbara Farnsworth and her crew, there are about 543 seniors last year in 2018, right? 2016, who were eligible for circuit breaker.
Okay.
So of those 543 folks, they would also have to own, you have to own a home. Under the act, you have to live in Hingham for 10 years or more.
Yep.
And you'd have to apply for this additional benefit. So let's assume all of those 543 fall into that category, which I doubt, but let's assume that. And then we took a maximum property valuation of $778,000, and it amounted to just under $500,000 of shift. Do you want to maybe, sorry, I'm putting Sue on the spot.
One, two?
No, I, all right. Let me, let me rephrase, let me rephrase. So to answer it in a more direct way perhaps, about $500,000.
2016, 543 circuit breaker applicants, they got in 2016, their exemption was $986 for a total of $535,398. So if you take that divided by the estimated equalized value of all property in Hingham, and then multiply that by the average household, it would come out to an average increase in taxes of $56.21.
So at most, $500,000-ish. The way the act is written, the board of selectmen, the way the process would work is, people would come in, and they could come in anywhere from, say, June to August. They would have to demonstrate with the circuit breaker return that they filed for the previous year, and they received the circuit breaker tax exemption. Then we would know the number of people and the amount of the real estate tax bill that would be in play. And then Sue, again, would come before us with a series of choices, because we can set the exemption anywhere from 50% of the circuit breaker amount that you heard Sue just mention, that $935,000, $935, anywhere from 50% of that amount to 100% of that amount. So we can match state circuit breaker up to 50% through 100%. So the thing, the thing I like about, I think, the program is that it allows us every year to monitor from a budget standpoint, you know, essentially what we can afford in, in tax breaks. I will say, I guess, that, you know, wild swings in the percentage of exemption amounts is not helpful. So I think that we would, you know, in year one, I think we need to be able, to me, we'd need to be able to identify, I think, something that we could live with for the longer term, because I don't think it's helpful to, you know, in one year, give it, and in the next year, take it away. But that, again, I think the flexibility and the discretion and the ongoing ability to account for this within the budget, you know, I think does create, certainly creates some work for, for our staff. This will create work for the assessor's office, but so far, we think that we've created, that we've crafted a formula, right, that doesn't, that doesn't require a lot of outside accounting and analysis by us.
And it looks like Section 6, that it would expire after three years unless reaffirmed, so after three years, town meeting would have the ability to say, we'd like to continue this or not.
Right, and we'd have three years of experience at that point. You know, I will say, so the other towns where this is implemented include Sudbury, Concord, Andover has a version of this. You know, it's, it's towns much like us with, you know, highly valued real estate with significant tax burdens that are trying to keep, trying to create a path to keep elderly citizens that want to live in Hingham, in Hingham. And, you know, we talked about this on Monday, and, you know, there aren't a lot of choices for folks housing-wise, if they sell the big house, or they sell the family home, and where do they go next? And also, you know, I sort of pushed on the, on the valuation of real estate, you know, really, we're talking about homes valued in the range of $500,000 to $600,000, which in this town is very easy to, to get up that high. So it's not as if people, I guess, are, are living in the lap of luxury and we're subsidizing them. That's not what this, that's not what this is doing. So, you know, one of the things that we said, I think, in the financial policy was, that was important, I think, to all three of us that we articulated, was that we were committed to economic diversity in Hingham. And, you know, I know this is going to cost some of us $50-ish, but I'd like to think that it's part of the pay it forward, right? These are folks who have lived in town for at least 10 years, who have contributed to our tax base for that entire time, and this is a little recognition, I think, of that, and a little bit of help for folks who, I think, could use it.
Does, Karen, do you and your team have a suggestion in year one about how to pay for it? I mean, I know you laid out those two options, but are you, are you inclined to recommend one method over the other?
I mean, I think for the, I think probably that the most efficient approach in, in a year-one implementation of this would be a tax shift, because it would allow for a more efficient setting of the tax rate. So, you know, I think if this passes, we would do more analysis around, you know, when we'd need to identify a funding source, what the funding source might be, and how, how an external funding source affects the ability to set the tax rate. So.
And we have the unused levy capacity, which is, which is built into the forecast, so I'm just, in my head, trying to, I'm just trying to think of the mechanics of that, because the, the unused levy capacity is essentially, we all at town meeting a couple years ago said, you can tax us this much, and we task, we taxed that much less $550,000. So, so we've been carrying this unused capacity, which is basically, has already been authorized by the taxpayers of Hingham, but we were using meals tax revenue to offset some of the cost of the middle school. So it would, by using that, it would not require a vote of, the town has already authorized that, so the, the tax dollars would still shift, but it wouldn't require, it's, but the dollars are available in the budget, is that?
No, I love that you asked this, because that was exactly where I started with this, and, and I couldn't get the puzzle pieces to fit neatly, but that's the, that's the exact concept that I would pursue.
My guess would be, and I'll just use like, I'll just use numbers, and Sue, like, nod your head or shake your head if this is like right or wrong.
Or you could throw something.
Yeah, but, you know, so hypothetically, five years ago, my, I'm going to use round numbers, my taxes, I said yes to the middle school, so my taxes were going to go up by $200. But we used the meals tax money, so back then, my taxes only went up by 150. Even though I said, you have my permission to raise my taxes by 200, the town only raised them by 150. So what that would mean this year is that my tax bill would go up by the 2.5% that it typically goes up every year. In addition, that $50 that I said six years ago, you could, you could raise my taxes, will also be reflected in my tax bill. But that, in this scenario, those, that, that $500,000 would only be taxed on the households in Hingham that are not part of the circuit breaker.
That's right.
So instead of mine going up by $50, so mine might go up by $51, because there would be 500 households that wouldn't see that bump up.
Right. So I think, and that's why we, in our legislation, included the funding source. The other towns that have enacted this so far have not included an external funding source, was because, because we wanted to be able to think carefully through how the town's sort of fiscal responsibility demonstrated through the under levy could now maybe shift from across, an across-the-board tax break for everybody to a tax break for people who are having trouble staying in town.
So in a sense, what we're doing is, we're saying, every household in Hingham has had the benefit of this middle school tax relief.
That's right.
For five or six years. Going forward, a portion of the residents of Hingham will receive a little bit more benefit than everybody else. We'll all still receive some benefit.
Yep.
But...
Right.
It would, yeah, you know...
The complexity of it, though, is just, was just then taking, taking that budgeting notion and figuring out a way to make it work with the tax rate-setting process. But if this passes, so this, the other thing to think about, right, is if this passes, it has to be approved by, what I lovingly refer to as the great general court. So it has to be approved by the legislature, so it's going to take another, another cycle. So it would come into play for the FY 20, FY '21 budget cycle. So it gives us some time, Mary, I think.
Yep.
To undertake the exercise, because that's where I started. I was like, we already have this on the table, and so we've already put it on the table. We've agreed as a town, that's important, but can we shift it in a way that gives a meaningful benefit to a really needy cohort here in town?
Yeah, and the other, the other thing that it, that that does is that it means that we don't have to create capacity within the Article 6 budget to pay for it.
Right.
And that's, that's another positive thing, because that's hard to do. It's hard to find half a million dollars in a year for a new line item. You know, I think it's, it's kind of fortuitous, Rick, I don't know if you were, Rick sent us a note today, and I'm just going to read it because it caught my attention. It was a discussion of abatements, and the number of abatements from this past year, 58 applications. And I just want to read what Rick wrote, because it is just really part of this conversation. "The biggest complaint we hear from our seniors is that it's getting harder to live and stay in Hingham. They realize that market values are increasing, but that doesn't help them. We advise them on the available exemptions and deferral programs, and in many cases it helps, but it isn't always enough. In most cases, they have no place to go. Rents are high, Avalon... Rents are high, Avalon $2,400 a month. The new units at Linden Ponds are over $600,000." This is great work.
Well, and I'd just like to recognize quickly Barbara Farnsworth, Sue Nickerson, G. Montgomery, Rick Nolan, Erin Walsh, and Kathy Glanzel from Elder Services, who's not here tonight, and Keith German. Because we came together on several occasions over the summer. This was a lot of work by the folks I just mentioned to put together the analysis in a, in a comprehensive way and in a way that, you know, in a way that balances the tax exemption with the fiscal responsibility of the town. It just was really good work, and it was really a privilege to be a part of.
And, you know, just, you know, I think back some, you know, on Karen and I on the advisory committee, you know, every few years, we look through all the different tax relief options, and you read something, and, you know, it says, "Oh, it's, you know, it could be $500 for somebody," which is great. And then we say, "Well, how many Hingham residents do we think might be able to take advantage of this opportunity?" Three. And, and so, we've done a wonderful job finding all those things, and they're meaningful. But the idea to me, to be able to make life a little bit easier for 543 households is significant.
I was sat here for six years, and I said to myself, "I'm never touching that unused tax levy." So, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I respect what you're saying, and I'm closer to this relief than I like to be, but is there anybody who'd like to add anything to the conversation? Okay. Would you ladies like to vote this tonight? Or wait?
I'm ready. I mean, I think, I think since the funding, since the funding issues wouldn't have to be taken up for a year, I think this is getting this rolling. I think we need to understand, this is a, this is like an 18-month implementation process. So, the longer we wait, the longer we have residents in our community who, who are missing an opportunity to help. So, I, understanding that now, I would, I would be prepared to vote on this tonight.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I recommend, I move and recommend favorable action on Article 99, home rule petition for the establishment of a Hingham meals, means-tested property tax exemption.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Thanks, team.
Karen, that's excellent work.
Well, and like you said, I think it does give us, give us some flexibility to think about how best to implement the cost, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
All right. I did that for you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, police sergeant interviews, which is one of the reasons we started early. Before we begin, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be speaking with five of our officers who are interviewing for the position of police sergeant in the Hingham police. And I thought it might be instructive and helpful for the deputy or the chief to come up and give us just a thumbnail sketch of the process that each of these individuals goes through before coming here tonight. So, gentlemen, you have, you have the floor. I will apologize to the chief, I did see the memo. I missed it, but we got it, so...
Good evening.
Good evening. So, if you could just briefly take us through where we've been in the past and, you know, what this whole process now is, you know, I know we just went through a lieutenant interview, but I just thought it'd be helpful for the residents to have a better understanding of the vetting process that the department goes through.
Sure. Good evening. So, this is what got us to this point is, but middle of last year, we asked the town to consider using assessment center testing instead of the standard civil service test, which we believe would give us a, you know, a more realistic and, you know, better-rounded candidate for the town to consider for the ranks of sergeant and lieutenant. So, we undertook the process of the assessment center. We contracted with a company called Public Safety Consultants. We held the assessment centers for lieutenant and sergeant in November, November 5th and 6th. The assessment center itself, very briefly, just basically uses Hingham policies, Hingham streets, Hingham locations in their, in their assessment center process with input from the chief and I. They have our policies and procedures. So, they review all that, and they develop a, an assessment that lasts the day for, you know, there's one day for lieutenant, one day for sergeant. So, the candidates who are interested in taking that, instead of going to sit at a traditional, you know, multiple-choice question, civil service test, they go and they take the assessment test, which was held in Hingham on those two days. So, they're given, in this case, they're given realistic scenarios that a sergeant would face, you know, on the road, and some curveballs thrown in to see how they, they react. The assessment center, mostly retired chiefs in administration from, from other departments, some, some current actively-serving administrators. They're rated, all the employees are rated, the candidates are rated, rather, and they're given a, basically a raw score from the assessment center. That score is sent from the assessment center directly to civil service. Civil service calculates in the employee's experience and education, so like a bachelor's, master's, whatever education they have. And then they, from that, they produce a final score. That final score is released to the candidates, and that is how we develop an eligibility list from civil service that we can act on to do a promotion. So, basically, civil service, when you're, when you're doing a, either a hiring or a promotion, they have rules about, you know, off the eligibility list, who you can interview for the position of either police officer or, in this case, a promotion. And basically, that rule is that you need to hire, however many you're hiring, you multiply that number times two and then add one to that group. So, if you're hiring one, you'd interview three. In this case, we're making two, so we get, you know, five names for that list. So, that's how we get to the, to the eligibility list and the number of people that we interview. After we get that list, it's, list is established, we put it upstairs in the board of selectmen's office. The candidates that are on that list have to go up and sign, state their interest in that position, that they would accept that position if offered it. Once that's done, that's to sit up there for seven days or until everyone signs. Then we take that list and we do an internal police chief's interview here at the station. We did that last Tuesday, I believe. And we use three area police chiefs, independent police chiefs, to conduct the interview. We used basically the same California post standard that we do new hire interviews for. They have questions that we use for promotional interviews as well. So, that basically standardizes the questions across the board for all candidates. It's fair for everybody, they're all the same questions, and they're rated on a, on a pre-designed scale, you know, from, from one to seven, I believe it is, for the, for each question. The chiefs independently score each person as they're going through the questions. At the end, they tally them up, and then they're, they're averaged between the three chiefs. During the interview process, the chief, myself, and Sergeant Matthew Lucas sat as observers. We also rate them on that same grading criteria, although our totals aren't calculated into that final score that the police channel, or police chief gives, rather. You know, we still do keep scores. We can see consistency between the, you know, our score and their scores as well. So, their, their findings are presented to the chief. One of the chiefs is appointed as the chair of that interview panel. He will develop, he did a brief write-up and finding his scores and presented that to the, to the chief for him to look at. And then, from that point, they're brought here before you to board of selectmen's interviews. So, that's sort of in a nutshell how to get to this point.
Quite an involved process.
Very involved, yes.
It isn't just us asking them a couple of questions and...
Correct. Yeah, they've been at this for months and months at this point.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Very dedicated to get to this point. You've got to put a lot of time and effort into, to get to this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I just think also during, and that is the review, after this is done, the deputy chief and I will review these interviews as well. And we'll also look at all their work records and history, not only just their work records, but what, you know, if they're involved in the community, the activities they play. So, it's an overall picture. We want to make sure that offices that are becoming sergeants and lieutenants, you know, are in sync with, with the town and the town's goals and...
Sure.
It's a very important step.
Sounds very thorough.
It is, for sure.
Yeah. Well, without further ado, why don't we begin? Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
For that explanation.
That's a great idea.
The first individual that we're going to have the pleasure of speaking with is Detective John Marquardt. While we're waiting, the selectmen retain the authority to appoint, promote, and discipline the police, so this is something that all three of us take very seriously. Welcome. Good morning.
Hey, John Marquardt. Good to see you.
Sure.
Welcome, detective.
Thank you.
Anywhere fine?
Yeah.
Detective, thanks for coming in tonight. The format's informal, deliberately so. We want to give you the opportunity to speak to the town, introduce yourself to those who may not know you, tell us something about yourself, and then each of my colleagues and myself will have a couple of questions, and you'll be given the opportunity at the conclusion of that questioning to add anything you'd like to. It's pretty similar to the lieutenant interviews that we conducted recently. So, with that having been said, sir, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I'm real happy to be here tonight. I'm appreciative of the opportunity. Again, my name's John Marquardt. I got a pretty interesting background. I started my career in 2005 with the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department. From there, I moved on to the LaSalle College Police Department. After that, I got lucky, I got my dream job. I got hired by the town of Abington. I worked there for a little bit, and then probably the luckiest day of my life happened when our deputy chief, Brad Durant, happened to read the Patriot Ledger and found out I was getting laid off. And he called over and spoke with the chief, Chief Mills at the time, and asked if they would be willing to let myself and my classmate, Nick Smith, lateral here. Fortunately, you know, it worked out, and I've been here since. I've been very fortunate. I've been given a lot since I've been here. You know, during that time, the town supported me when I deployed from 2011 to 2012 in Afghanistan. I never forgot that. The people were fantastic to me prior, prior to me leaving, while I was gone, and when I came back. So, I'm very fortunate enough to, I feel, I feel like I'm a part of the community because of that. During that timeframe, I also serve as an adjunct professor at Quincy College, teaching undergraduate courses to students. And since I've been here on the department, I've served as a patrolman, I've been in the traffic division, I've worked with other offices riding around, training them. I've been a school resource officer, safety officer, which was a fantastic job here. I was very lucky to get that job, and I was given a lot of autonomy by the chief to kind of help build that program up back from what it was. And I got to work with some fantastic administrators in town, with the school principals and the students and the teachers, and myself and Jeff Kilroy and Mike Javasi and some of the other officers. We got the schools up and running with, you know, active shooter preparedness, violent intruder preparedness and everything. And we really worked together with them to get everybody to buy into what we actually have now. After that, I got the, my dream job on the department. I got to serve as a detective where I currently am now. And again, I love my job, I love what I do, I'm lucky to be here, and I'm fortunate enough every day to have that position. I also work with the Citizens Police Academy. I instruct for them, I teach classes with them, I teach it for the regular Citizens Police Academy, I teach them for the alumni, the Alumni Academy. I also teach for the Linden Ponds group, alumni and the regular Police Academy for them. Additionally, I also do self-defense for women. I do rad women, rad kids, and rad seniors as of recent. And again, I love what I do, I like helping them out, I like helping the community out. In addition to that, I also work with some of the other offices here, Jeff Kilroy, Mike Javasi, different people like that, doing active shooter preparedness for the town. You've seen me, most of, most of the people have seen us, some of the instruction that we've done here. And that's been my background here with the department. My personal life, I'm married happily. I've got two kids that, you know, they're great, and, you know, they're growing up, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to set the right example for them and trying to provide, you know, a good life for them. I'm the youngest of eight. My parents, you know, they were, everybody was born in Boston, I was born down on the South Shore. I come from a family, a real blue collar family, you know, a life dedicated to service. My father was a Boston police officer for 39 years. My brother's a sergeant in Abington, and he's been on for over 20 years. And I have sisters that are nurses, and so, really service and giving back and trying to be selfless with what I do is kind of, you know, the cornerstone for my family and what we do. So, thank you.
Most impressive, detective, most impressive. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin with the question, I will just add that I had the pleasure and privilege to join Detective Marquardt in 2015, when the town traveled to the Pentagon, to receive the Freedom Award. And it was a real pleasure and privilege to have, to be in the company of two veterans, Mr. Marquardt and Senior Chief German. So, with that, we'll begin, and as is the custom in the department, we start with the junior.
Youngest, youngest goes first. I don't know if that would happen to you in the family of eight, but, yeah, youngest goes last.
And for yourselves.
Yeah, exactly. Good luck if there's anything left, right? John, listen, I really appreciate the time and effort you put into providing the materials to us. It really was helpful in trying to get to know you a little bit on paper, and, you know, I just appreciate the enthusiasm of your remarks tonight. You know, to me, the, the leadership of the department's in good hands with folks of your caliber, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
When you went through this, the assessment process, they, they talked about addressing an issue that's important to the community. So, they had to pick an issue, and you had to figure out, like, how you'd go about solving it. It sounded like you could solve it in a multifaceted way. You might solve it with your colleagues, you might solve it with members of the community. So, I just wondered, you know, what your reaction was to that, that scenario, and, you know, what issue, is there an issue out there that, that you see as, as being primarily important to the town at this moment?
Sure. The assessment process was, was an interesting process because it's not really, it's not really anything that you can study for. Like, you can, it's a culmination, in my opinion, of what your, what your career and what your life has been up to at that point. And it's important that you have something to show for it, like a body of work, an actual body of work that you've done, that you can, you can rely on that experience. Because when people talk about experience, it's, it's so important to have actionable experience that you can, you can use to rely on. When we, when we went through that, it was, it was certainly challenging. I mean, you had to have, you had to be able to think, and you had to be able to think on what your past practice has shown you. And for me, one of the biggest issues that I see facing the town, and something that everybody kind of has to get together in a group and work with, is mental health. We are, we are constantly going to calls and dealing with people with, with high levels of mental health issues, all the way down to, to low levels of mental health issues. And when I first got on the job, you know, a number of years ago, I, I worked in the prison, and I can tell you that I did not see mental health issues as much as, as we're seeing now. And there's a lot, there's a lot of reasons for that. The stigma is, is gone away from that a little bit. People are more open about talking about their issues. In terms of what we do in the department, you know, the chief has been fortunate enough, he's let a few of us go to trainings to get us trained up because we're going to these calls, and we're asked as, as police officers to shoulder this, these burdens, these other people, and we have to be able to wear those hats. So, we have to have that training. And I was one of the first officers to go through the critical incident training and the, the mental health first aid training. And what it, what it taught us, because what we were able to see on the street, what it taught us was that you had to work in a collaborative effort with everybody, you had to work with social workers, you had to work with recovery coaches, you had to work with the people's family, you had to work with your other offices, and you had to show other offices and allow other offices a say in this so that you can get the person the best help they need at the time. And that was, what's the best, what's the best outcome for, for that person? It doesn't necessarily mean getting arrested. It means, can we get that person help? Can we give their family guidance? And that, being a part of the assessment process and being able to think that through at a level that, as a supervisor, you're going to have to.
Right.
Because you're going in a million different directions, and you need to be able to prioritize and multitask. It's important to be able to, to learn how to do that and rely on your experience to do that.
Great. Great answer. And then, the one thing that jumped out at me, both from your resume and from your remarks tonight, is just your, your commitment to education and mentorship, and I, I guess I'd...
the person the best help they need at the time. And that was, what's the best, what's the best outcome for that person? It doesn't necessarily mean getting arrested. It means, can we get that person help? Can we give their family guidance? And that, being a part of the assessment process and being able to think that through at a level that, as a supervisor, you're going to have to.
Right.
Because you're going in a million different directions, and you need to be able to prioritize and multitask. It's important to be able to learn how to do that and rely on your experience to do that.
Great. Great answer. And then the one thing that jumped out at me, both from your resume and from your remarks tonight, is just your commitment to education and mentorship. And I guess I'd just like to hear you comment a little bit about how you think that influences your leadership style.
Sure. I remember being in the room upstairs a number of years ago when Chief Perino was named chief. And I sat in that room, and I remember one of the things that he said when he took the job is he said that this is a young department. This is a department right now that's going to grow old together because everybody's so close. And that's a great thing for the people of the town because that means you're going to have a lot of people with experience. But one of the biggest things that's important in our job, and anybody that does it will tell you, is mentorship. We need, as potential supervisors, and not even potential supervisors, as practitioners of what we do, it's important to be able to mentor the people below us, the people alongside us, and even at some points, the people above us, because everybody has a voice in how this job is going to go. And everybody has something to offer. And it's important that we mentor these folks because the law changes every day. Societal needs change every day. I mean, if we look at the way that law enforcement was viewed five or six years ago to the way that it's viewed now throughout society, it's different now. We have to continue to change. It has to be us that changes because society's dictating that. And mentorship is a huge part of that. We have to allow officers to learn. We have to empower them to be able to learn and show them what we have. I mean, I've been given a lot. And, you know, to whom much is given, much is expected, right? And I've been fortunate enough to be given a lot of opportunities here that other people haven't. So I take it as my responsibility to be able to give back to, to be able to give back to these younger offices and other offices that I work alongside, so that way that they can be successful too.
Thank you.
Mary.
I'm going to ask the same two questions of all the candidates, but before doing that, one thing that jumps out just through the written materials, which were of just very high professional quality, and some of your remarks is a real sense of gratitude. And I just want you to know that that's one of the biggest impressions that I'm being left with tonight is your sense of gratitude for opportunities you've been given throughout your life. And I admire that.
Thank you.
How has your experience prepared you to assume a leadership role in the Hingham Police Department?
You know, that's a good question. And I remember getting that question, a similar question a couple of weeks ago. And it's not something that I just started preparing for a year ago. It's not, like, this is my life. I mean, I understand that my resume's there, and that's paper, and it says a lot of great things that I've done. But this is my life. And I prepared for this the day that I decided to be, that I wanted to be a police officer, the day that I was fortunate enough to be chosen to be a police officer. Everything I did, every training that I went to, every extra shift that I worked, every time I tried to go out and learn, every, you know, pain in the butt question that I asked my supervisors and tried to get their guidance on stuff, all of that was to get me here today. And that is, that is so important moving forward that, you know, I continue to have that mindset because it's contagious. If people see that, you know, that I'm lucky to, I truly, truly honestly feel, I'm very lucky to be here. And this is the best job in the world. And there's nothing else I'd rather be doing. There's nothing else I'm supposed to be doing. So I want that, I want people to love it as much as I do because it really is the best job in the world. And if you have a positive attitude, if you go out there and do the best you can every single day, and you do it by your actions, not necessarily by your words, but by your actions, that's contagious. People will get that, and they'll want, they'll want to get behind you. They'll want to work alongside you, and they'll want to work with you.
Thank you. And my second question, I'm going to ask you to maybe give me an example from at some point in your police career. You mentioned earlier the importance of experience. And, you know, when I think about a police officer, in particular a sergeant, you're going to be in situations where you have to make decisions without all the information you'd like.
Uh huh.
You wish you had more, but you don't have the time, you don't have the information. Can you think back of an example of a situation that you had to handle where, you know, you really had to sort of think on your feet? You didn't have all the information you needed? And just kind of describe how you handled that?
Sure. You know, being a detective, you know, we have a very unique job. And I can think of a particular scenario where we had a, we had a car stop one night, and it was some folks from out of town. And I realized that, you know, they had, you know, some information about them that, you know, they were kind of undesirable. They were involved with drugs. They were involved in the sale and distribution of narcotics. So I knew they were kind of on my radar a little bit. So I wanted to go out, and I wanted to stop them, and I needed to figure out, you know, how to do that. But I wanted to, you know, speak to them. And we have certain things that we have to follow. I can't just stop you for no reason. And, you know, as I stopped them for a motor vehicle violation, my job is to get them, it's a chess match at that point. So I don't have much to go on, so I have to get them talking. And basically, I got them, just by general conversation, by, you know, treating them like a human being, I got them to give up some information to me that was definitely incriminating towards them. And just thinking on my feet, being able to hold a conversation, being able to not have necessarily, for lack of a better term, an intimidating presence towards them, I was able to have them give me information that they didn't even realize that they gave me. And it led to a, you know, led to an arrest for narcotics. And it was a successful case for us.
Thank you.
I've been doing this for a while now, but this is the first time I've interviewed a candidate for any position in Hingham Police Department's got the Purple Heart. And I was reading your commendations that you received while serving as a soldier in Afghanistan. And I have to say, I'm most impressed. And part of that is because I enjoyed serving with policemen who had similar experiences in different theaters in their own history. Detective, this is a question I'm going, like Mary, I'm going to ask all of your colleagues. But as a sergeant, what kind of work ethos or ethos would you bring to that role with respect to the men and women that you would be called upon to supervise?
Well, it's probably the most tremendous responsibility that you'll have as a police officer. I mean, I think if you, you know, sir, you did the job for a number of years. And the sergeant is the most important position on the department, and it's the most tremendous responsibility that you can have for a number of reasons. One being that you're the conduit between management and, you know, the patrol force. You know, the chief has a message in a directive that he wants to get out to the troops, to the men and women. It's my job to get that message out. Whether it's a popular decision, an unpopular decision, my job is to make sure that people, that the people that I'm tasked with having accomplished that think it's the best directive that's ever been given in the history of directives. It's my job to get that message out because we have things we have to accomplish. The responsibility is tremendous for me because you're, in my opinion of what a true sergeant is, is that he is responsible for everything. Nothing happens without the sergeant knowing about it. Nothing happens without the sergeant being aware of it. And I think that if you truly, truly, truly want that responsibility, you truly, truly want to do that job, everything about that is bearing the burdens of your subordinates. It's carrying their load with them. It's making sure that they, it's making sure that they do the right thing all the time. It's making sure that their, things are going okay at home with them, making sure that their families are okay, making sure that they're okay, making sure that their mental health and well-being is taken care of. It encompasses everything. And that's why, that's why it's so important because everybody's going to look to you. When it goes south, if it really goes south and something happens, everybody looks to you. And you need to have knowledge. You need to have compassion. You need to have empathy. You need to have approachability. And you need to, you need to be able to be adaptive because you're going to deal with a million different people and different egos and different mindsets. And you have to wear all those hats. The same way that you approach a person with 32 years on the job is not going to be the same way that you approach a person with 32 minutes on the job. Same message, but different approach. And it's important that the sergeant understands that. I mean, more than anything, it's about the responsibility for me. It's about letting them know that I will do everything I can in my power to make your job easier for you and not make your job difficult. The standard that I set for myself is going to be far higher than anybody has for me and anything like that. It's, my standard is sky high. And I'm going to, I hold myself to that every day. It's the same standard that I hold to myself as a patrolman, as a school resource officer, a detective, and as a citizen when I'm not in uniform. And that responsibility, you're not a sergeant, you don't hang up your sergeant's hat when you go home. You are that, that is what you do 24 hours a day. And you, there's a lot of expectations that come with that. And that's why it's extremely important to me is that how you carry yourself, how you treat people, how well you work with others, will determine whether they'll work with you, for you, follow you, and alongside you.
Thank you. The last question is this, and it's, I asked the lieutenants this question too. What, in your opinion, is the most important working tool that a police officer has? And what is it that you will have zero tolerance as a sergeant for?
I think the most important tool that we have is our mind. The job has changed so much over the years. You've got to be able to think, and you've got to be able to use common sense. And it's so important now more than ever with a lot of the scrutiny that law enforcement faces is that you've got to be able to work with people. You've got to have compassion for people. And if you don't have that, you, especially as a sergeant, you won't be successful. You'll just be another body there. And people might do what you say because you're the sergeant, but they won't really follow you. And that's important that you get, you get people that want to work with you and to work alongside you. In terms, in terms of things that I won't tolerate, I could tell you right now, the most, we know the most important things are your character, your integrity and all that. The Hingham Police isn't going to make you a top character person. Those are things that were made, were ingrained in you. That's your upbringing. And we think we've done a good enough job with people here, but we feel like we have top character and top integrity people here. But I won't tolerate somebody that lies. If you put anybody, anybody here from the top down, if you put any of these guys in a position, or girls in a position to fail, and you go and you try to hurt, you know, try to hurt them by your actions, by lying or anything like that, I personally would not have any tolerance for that. It's just, it's not going to happen with me. And again, it's so important, if you, as a sergeant, as a potential sergeant, if you are not about these, the men and women that work here, if your first order of business is not about them and doing everything you can to make their life better and make their jobs better and make the better product out on the street, then I don't want to work with you as a supervisor. Like, I want people that want to make everybody's life better. And that's my, that's my goal. That's what I hope to bring to the table. And again, I won't tolerate lying. I won't tolerate stealing. I won't tolerate any of that stuff. And that's what's important to me.
Detective, I want to thank you very much. Most impressive. Before we sign off, I'll give you the opportunity of closing statement, should you care to make one. And thank you so much for your service and your dedication to both the department and the country.
I appreciate that. And I, look, I'm grateful to be up here, and I appreciate the questions. I know that these are questions that you thought about, that aren't just taken off a sheet of paper, like, you really thought about them. So I do appreciate that. It's definitely an eye-opening experience coming in here, for sure. But, look, I want to let you know, regardless of what your decision is, being a leader isn't just about, you know, if you have a bar on your shoulder or some stripes on your arm or anything like that. It's about who you are. It's your character, your integrity, and how you carry yourself and how you conduct yourself day by day. So whether I'm chosen or not, I'm still going to be a leader here. You have, you guys have some tough choices to make, and I know the chiefs do. There's, every single person that's in that room is a friend of mine. And I'd be comfortable working with, alongside or for any of them any day of the week. They're really fantastic candidates, and you're going to, you're going to see that. And, you know, when you do, it's going to make, it's going to be tough choices for you to make. And I don't envy your positions, but, you know, I hope that it's me. But again, I'm, these are some really good people. This department's in good hands. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well done.
Outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I hope you appreciate how fortunate the town is. About to see some outstanding talent in the room tonight. The next interviewee will be Officer Jeffrey Kilroy.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thanks for being here. Good to see you.
Officer Kilroy, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Our format is relatively informal and similar to the lieutenant's interviews that we conducted a few weeks ago. We're giving each of you the opportunity to give a presentation to the town, is telling them about yourself, you know, where you've come from, what you do. And at which point, the three of us will ask a couple of questions each, and then you'll have the opportunity, should you so desire, to make a closing statement. So it's pretty, pretty informal. And I'd start with Karen.
Is he going to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself. Officer Kilroy, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. Thank you. It's a pleasure and honor to be here tonight. Thank you very much for having me. So I'm 39 years old. I am married to my supportive and understanding wife of 10 years, Jen. And she's home right now with our three little guys. I have three boys, ages three, seven, and eight. And pretty chaotic at home all the time.
I bet.
When I'm not working, I'm spending as much time with them as possible, coaching their teams, doing outdoor activities, everything I can. A little bit about my background, I was born and raised here in Hingham. And ever since I was a little guy, I always kind of knew I wanted to do the job of being a police officer. So it kind of gave me some direction in life, made things a little easier. Went to Hingham High School, graduated there in 1998. And from there, went to Bridgewater State College. And I studied criminal justice and my junior and senior year of college there. And again, with the direction, knowing that I wanted to be a police officer, tried to seek out work as much as I could. During college, I worked for the police department in a limited capacity, you know, driving safety shuttles, et cetera, kind of getting to know the police department in that sense. My junior and senior year of college, I went off to Oak Bluff Police Department, worked there as a special police officer during the summers. And that kind of also helped me gain some experience. I was very fortunate when I graduated to be hired by the police department there on campus. And I worked there for approximately three years. During that time, obviously finished my, finished my degree at school. I graduated magna cum laude and then began my master's degree, which took a lot longer than I expected just because of working full-time and working nights. And so it took a little longer, but it was well worth it. So went on to continue with my studies and also was able to go to the full-time police academy while I was at the Bridgewater State College Police Department. It was a great opportunity. With that being said, it was very helpful here because in 2005, I was able to get hired here as a police officer. And the nice thing about that was I already had the academy training. So that kind of helped. I could go right out on the road and start my field training process. So as soon as I got hired here, definitely sought every way I could to try to get involved, both with the community and within the department. And I knew I just wouldn't be content with, you know, just, I always was striving for more, wanted to feel that sense of purpose. I had a strong desire to help my other fellow officers. So kind of became a niche for me to get involved in training. 2007, I became a field training officer for the department. And I've trained approximately just over 25 officers over the course of my career here. That really gave me a sense of personal pride and seeing, being able to help those officers and a lot of who I've become friends with over the years. Similar, shortly there in that timeframe, I also had a unique opportunity to join the Metro Elektra SWAT team. In that capacity, I held the position of an operator for 10 years. And in 2016, I was promoted to team leader, which I currently hold that position now. Again, along the same line of that, that kind of helped me with training and being involved, which kind of steamrolled into 2008, getting on as a firearms instructor here in the town. Obviously proficiency with firearms, being on a SWAT team, it kind of went hand in hand. I was the first police officer to gain the position of a firearms instructor historically. It was always a position of rank. We still have heads of the department that are in rank. Lieutenant Cochran runs the division. I'm proud to work for him. But I was the first patrolman to be able to attain that position. That kind of steamrolled into, again, training, again, really became a passion of mine, trying to keep the officer safe. I think we all kind of know, if I have that knowledge, to keep it to myself is useless because when, God forbid, something were to happen, most likely I'm not going to be the guy there. There'll be somebody, or a male or female officer that we have that'll be there, that'll need to solve the problem. Furthering that, furthering my education, my experience, started getting involved in teaching more so at the academy level, police academies. 2010, went off to You know, proud to work for him. But I was the first patrolman to be able to attain that position. That kind of steamrolled into, again, training, again, really became a passion of mine, trying to keep the officer safe. I think we all kind of know, if I have that knowledge, to keep it to myself is useless, because when, God forbid, something were to happen, most likely, I'm not going to be the guy there, and there'll be somebody, or a male or female officer that we have that'll be there, that'll need to solve the problem. Furthering that, furthering my education, my experience, started getting involved in teaching more so at the academy level, police academies. 2010, went off to teach for several of the different municipality police departments in defensive tactics, active shooter, applied patrol procedures. Again, doing it not only at that level, but also at the police department here. The active shooter program kind of steamrolled into more that we've done on a level here, also with regards to training civilians and, you know, doing preparedness, and also that kind of went right with community outreach, doing the citizens' police academies, stuff that I really enjoyed, doing presentations at the schools, doing presentations for Notre Dame, et cetera, helping our school resource officers, again, with preparedness, violent intruder programs, et cetera. So it all kind of went together, moving towards the goal of where I'd like to be today. Recently got promoted to a Level 4 instructor, which is the highest level you can attain in defensive tactics training, one of 12 instructors in the state. That's kind of a position where I can make a lot of, help make changes, be on the board that oversees, and again, just kind of furthering my training and experience. And the promotion that I recently had to team leader on the SWAT team kind of really rang home with that leadership thing that I really craved. It was really something I really desired and really looked for. So it kind of became a no-brainer to seek this route. It's kind of a route that I always wanted to go down, and it's kind of all been coming together with regards to my progression. So that being said, it's a pleasure to try to make that next step, and it's an honor, humbled and honored to be here before you.
Well, Officer Kilroy, I have to say, this is the most impressive resume in employment history that you've had with not only the department, but just generally in your journey in law enforcement, and I thank you for the dedication and effort in that regard.
Thank you, sir.
It's quite impressive. At this point, I will turn to Ms. Johnson.
No, and I share Paul's analysis of your written materials. I mean, just really a stellar letter, resume, the amount of time and effort that you took to sort of tell your story on paper is really helpful to us in preparing to talk with you tonight. And so, as you probably understand, we ask the same couple of questions to everybody. And so the first one I was sort of interested in was your experience in the Assessment Center, where, you know, I gather they asked you to confront an issue that's important to the town and sort of, on your feet, think about how are you going to respond to it, not only maybe through your colleagues in the police department, but with outside resources. So I wonder if you could either take me through a little bit of how you approached the issue in the Assessment Center, or if there's another issue that you feel is important to the town that you could share, kind of your analysis of how you might approach a problem in that regard, that'd be helpful to me.
Sure. I think one of the problems that are facing us today would probably be the mental health issues, crisis intervention with regards to that, pretty prevalent. And I feel as though, you know, being able to work together with our officers, and all of us work as a team, which is the most important thing. And the support of our administration with regards to getting us training has been huge. I know that the chief's been seeking out training for us with crisis intervention. It's probably, I mean, it's almost not a shift, or a day that goes by that we don't deal with someone that wants to harm themselves or is having some type of episode that needs assistance. It's just becoming very, very prevalent. The role of our police officer today has changed so much that, you know, from social worker to coach to whatever it may be, taking extra time to talk to little ones, talking to them about why their parents are having these issues, et cetera. Being able to deal with that is huge. I feel as though we've, I know that Officer Murphy's done some work with the SNAP program, and just being able to make us more well-rounded in dealing with different people's needs, and I think that's huge. I think that's a really big thing, because there's so many different things that we need to be educated on, too. And I think all of us that I work with, I'm very fortunate, everyone is very well-rounded, accepting, but we also can, there's room for improvement, and fine-tuning and training, and being able to safely deal with some of these situations. I deal a lot with use of force. I do a lot of training for our officers in setting up scenarios where someone's having a mental life crisis or mental health crisis, an armed person who's having an episode, how can we deal with that? How can we de-escalate it? How can we integrate training and assessments and communications, stuff like that?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, you know, in making this move, right, it's important for us to get a sense of your leadership style, and there are a couple of things that jumped out to me, both your written materials and your statements tonight. I mean, the last paragraph, frankly, of your cover letter is one of the best paragraphs I've ever read. I mean, you spoke, I think, very fervently about your belief in the profession of policing, and I think it was very well done. And your remarks here tonight about pursuing training for yourself, but also training your fellow officers, I'm sort of wondering how those might tie together in sharing what you view as your leadership style.
Sure. So my leadership style, I would say, is kind of a blend, I think it has to be nowadays. I feel as though, again, everything isn't cut and dry. Everything is, you know, there seems to be, there's a time and a place for everything. And there needs to be a time when you need to be authoritative, excuse me. And I like to try to be more of a transformational, I like to, you know, take input from other people, empower others, tell them to give me their input, but there's a time and a place for that as well. You know, we can't sit and deliberate when there's a crisis going on, potentially. However, you know, getting my fellow officers to communicate with me, buy into what we're trying to do here, accept the mission at hand, is very important. So it helps, obviously, leading by example, working together, and, you know, it almost becomes a natural flow when, you know, if I tell somebody to do something, and I'm going to be doing it right with you, no problem. You know, and I'm not going to ask you to do something I wouldn't do.
Yep.
I'm not going to tell you to, you know, put your hat on if I'm standing there without mine on, you know? So I feel as though, you know, there's a blend of leadership styles that all kind of achieve a goal.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I would just say that I appreciated the letters of recommendation and the letters of recognition that you accumulated. I found that they were just helpful in getting some perspective, and I agree with my colleagues, they were very impressive.
Thank you.
You know, you just mentioned something that kind of leads to my question, where you said, you know, you often can't really sit and deliberate. And that means that as a police officer, there are many times where you have to make a decision very quickly, while you may not necessarily, you may not have the time to deliberate, you may not have all the information. And that's particularly important in the sergeant role, because the direction that you're going to be, you know, you'll be providing direction to others. I wondered if you could think of a situation or an example at some point in your career where you were just in that situation, where, you know, you had to do something without having all the information at hand or not a lot of time to deliberate? I'm kind of interested in what that situation was and how you handled it.
I would say, probably it was within the last year or so, we had a situation where it was kind of unique, it kind of morphed into more than what we had expected. I was actually teaching during the day in Quincy, and we had, we were on our lunch break, and a beyond-the-lookout came out for a male party who was, you know, threatening to harm himself and also, you know, law enforcement. And as the day progressed, towards the end of the day, my phone rang, I was finishing up my teaching assignment in Quincy, and they said, hey, we got a situation developing down here on the north side of town, and, you know, this guy wants to do, I go, you gotta be kidding me, it's the same person? Who would have thought? I think it was out of Chelsea or something, and it ends up on a road in Hingham, right? So we get down there, I left where I was working, flew down, assisted the officers on scene who were doing an excellent job with setting up a perimeter and containment, et cetera. And it was one of those scenarios where things kind of developed kind of rapidly. We were fortunate that that day, we had some equipment in the area, so we requested the SWAT team assets, and we got some guys on scene pretty quickly and set up, again, containment around this house. And it was kind of unclear as to what was going on inside the house, but we knew that that male party was there, and there was a female in the house, potentially a child as well, and we didn't know if they were being held against their will, whatever it may be. While things were developing rapidly, we were trying to get in place, the male party presents himself out the back door, everything kind of developed pretty quickly, ran back in the house out the front door, and we just kind of put our plans in motion. We kind of reverted back to our training, took him into custody on the front lawn, cleared the house, rendered the other female safe, and it was a successful outcome. But I found that, you know, making a decision's sometimes better than no decision, and you got to put something in plan and place, and I feel as though our officers are very well-trained in that, and you just got to get it done.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Officer, like I say, I'm asking the same questions to all your colleagues. I'm particularly interested in the work ethos of the kind of sergeant you would be. Having worn the stripes myself, I have a particular interest in this particular position, so I want to make sure I get it right.
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
Excellent. So it's a position that I've obviously sought for a long time, this is a career goal of mine, and not that I take lightly. You know, our public perception is so important, and it's something that I value highly. And being in this position, you know, where you have, able to influence your officers in a positive way, and again, be a role model for them, is so important, I think. You know, being somebody that they can turn to, that they can confide in. One of my biggest things I strive myself in when being a leader on the SWAT team, I have 10 operators assigned to me, is being a leader on and off the job as well. I feel that's so important. I feel, you know, there's been situations where, you know, I'm not the type of person that when I leave work, it's just, you know, turn off my phone, turn off my radio, it's it, you're gone, can't be in touch with them. I think every critical incident we've had here in the last 10 years, I've been a part of. It's just one of those things. Again, thankfully, I have an understanding family. But it's one of those things that, you know, they need to know that we're here for them, and, you know, leading transparency and letting them know that, you know, if they have something they can share with me, I'm here for them. And having their back, making sure that they know that they have somebody that they can confide in is big, I think. And they got to get the direction. When I show up on scene, I should give them a calming effect. They should know that we're going to get through this situation together. It's not something that I'm going to sit here and panic and drop the ball and we're going to have a problem. No, we're going to handle it, we're going to get it done, and if there's a problem, I'm going to take ownership of it and I'll make sure that it's taken. It falls on my shoulders, so, and I think they're going to know that that's how I operate.
Good answer. Last question, sir. What would you perceive to be the greatest strength of the police? And what is it that you would have zero tolerance for?
Okay. I think our greatest strength is kind of twofold. Our ability to be involved in community policing and our partnership with the community, I think, is one of our biggest strengths. That being said, our training and our ability to involve, the more officers we train and get them well-versed in the things, for instance, our lockdown programs, our ability to get officers on the same page, get them all trained up, being able to convey that message to the town is big. Letting them know that if they have an issue, we're going to come solve it. If they have questions, we can easily help them. It kind of goes hand-in-hand, but I think our overall strength has been our dedication to the community with regards to community policing, the Family Fun Day events, the car seat installation programs that Officer Galvin does, you know, the SNAP program I mentioned earlier. I mean, there's endless supplies of examples of community policing that I feel as though is one of our biggest strengths.
And what is it that you have no tolerance for, Officer?
For that would be integrity issues. There's just, especially this day and age, there's no tolerance for it, there's no place for it. You know, we've come to really strive for transparency and integrity with the community, having them having confidence in us, and I feel as though that's the most important thing to get across to the people.
Thank you very much. Before we conclude, is there anything you'd like to add before we say goodnight?
No, sir, this is just an honor to be here. I really appreciate your time and...
Well, it's a privilege to have you on the force as well. You're a credit to the uniform and the department. Thank you so much, Mr. Kilroy.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer.
Man, is it hot in here. How we doing?
Good. We're going to text the school department and say 8:15. What'd you say? Text the school department and say 8:15. Thanks for coming in.
Hey, Nick, how you doing, buddy?
Nice to see you, Officer.
It's good to see you again. The format's informal. We're giving each of you an opportunity to tell us in the public something about yourself, your background, your career, why you want to be sergeant. And then, at that point, each of us will ask a couple of questions. I'm trying to stay as consistent as I can with the questions I'm asking to all of you, so you get a sense. But with that having been said, when it's all done, if you wish, you can make some wrap-up comments as well. So at this point, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Nick Smith. I'm married, I have an amazing wife, and I have a son that'll be three years old this May. Coolest thing ever, being a dad, I can never imagine it. Been with the Hingham Police for nine years now. I started my career working as a summer cop on Nantucket in 2006. From there, I became a special in Abington in 2007, and I also worked at Curry College Department of Public Safety for two years. In 2009, I became a part-time civil service officer with Abington Police Department, was eventually hired full-time with Abington. I went to the academy, and once I graduated, I found out I was going to be laid off within two months. I was very fortunate that someone in the Hingham Police Department was reading the Patriot Ledger. There was an article that myself and John Barker were being laid off, and they called us place to see if we wanted to come over. Unfortunately, the chief and deputy of Abington agreed to that, and I tell you, it's a grace that's happened to besides the birth of my son and me and my wife. Since being on the Hingham Police Department, I've had a few roles that I've tried to take, and I try to do as much as I can, because I want to be a jack-of-all-trades, I want to be someone that people come to for advice and questions. I work in the traffic division, I've been doing that since, I believe, 2014 now. I've been the union vice president, I've had two stints in that. I did that 2013 to 2015, and then again, I picked it back up in 2017. I do that with John Barker as the president, and we try to run a type ship, but do things well for the town and for our guys. The biggest role I feel like I have, that I enjoy and take a lot out of, is the field training officer position. And I imagine you probably think everyone in the Hingham Police Department is a field training officer, because I feel like everyone that you see has been through that. What, just so I can explain what it is, you're chosen to be someone that takes out the new guys. You go to a school, and when people graduate the academy, you take them out and you show them the Hingham way. The chief has bestowed upon you, he knows that you do things the right way, and he wants you to teach these new hires how to do that. And I think that's like an incredible responsibility, and it's a privilege to be chosen to do that. I really look forward to doing it. As you see, I may have also kind of tried to tinker a little bit with the technology aspect of the job, with the dash cams that we have, our cruiser computers, the backup C just wrapped for the department, we're going to be having audit this year, so looking forward to that, I guess. We'll see how that goes. But I'll just say, I feel like I'm very fortunate to be here today. The things I've done, I've tried to make it, so it puts me in this seat to be ready when called upon.
You know, Officer, I know we've talked before in this role and in other interviews, and I really enjoy talking with you. At the risk of reflecting back, I can remember when I was on the job, nobody ever had to ask me for my badge number, because my red hair kind of just said it all. So I would imagine you're in a similar circumstance.
I think that's why I stayed out of trouble my whole life.
I wasn't told, no.
I wasn't going to say.
I wasn't gonna say.
Ms. Johnson.
Nick, thanks for being here tonight and thanks for the thoughtful presentation in both your resume and cover letter and provision of the certifications and very, very impressive background. And like you said, it's, it's pretty evident from what you've presented in this package that you've, you've worked hard to get to sit in this seat tonight. So we appreciate you being here. One of the things that I was struck by was your, your ability to collaborate with a, you know, kind of a bunch of different groups that you come into contact with as part of your job. And I know as part of the assessment process, you were asked to identify, or the assessment process identified an important issue and then asked you to figure out in kind of a multifaceted way how you might address that issue. So I was wondering if there is an issue that you see as being important in Hingham and how you might go about addressing an issue in that area?
Sure. I, I think the two big things that you're really gonna see hitting law enforcement in, in communities throughout the Commonwealth, not just Hingham, is you have an opiate crisis that's going on and coupled that with a mental health issue. As you may see in my resume, I've tried to jump right in headfirst on both those issues to get involved. There's a group called Plymouth County Outreach that involves departments of, throughout Plymouth County, and then it also involves social groups, probation. And we just try to come to a common goal of stopping overdoses, meeting with these people, going to their own homes after an overdose happens and offering services to them. We go with an outreach coach. It's an incredible program.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm very fortunate to be part of it. I'm on like the lowest rung, don't get me wrong, but to be part of it is, is pretty impressive and I'm kinda honored to say that I do that. The mental health aspect is also huge. It's something that we see every day and it doesn't look like it's going away anytime soon. I joined, or I went to a training, I know it's important to the chief, and he asked who was looking, he wanted people to go to a crisis intervention team training. Put my hand right up and said, "I'll be there," because I knew it was important to him and I feel like it's important to this town. That involved a week-long training about different groups and that are available to people that are in type, a type of mental health crisis, whether it be social mental health, their crisis team, they were representative of some hospital emergency rooms. And I think coming out of that was very helpful and I brought a lot of information back to my coworkers, because I think we, it's tough, but I think it's something we can totally work on and hopefully make better.
And Nick, I'd just like to get a sense of your leadership style, you know, as you assume this role and sort of evolve potentially into the leadership ranks of the department. So, you know, it's, it's obvious to me, again, from your resume and from your remarks, that you're committed to, to training both for yourself and as a field training officer to younger officers. You know, can you talk a little bit about how you approach your, what your leadership style is like?
Sure. I think leadership is so important. I mean, without it, it's like it's a rudder to the ship, you're not gonna go anywhere. I try to do with the field training program, it's kinda like a mentoring program where you, you coach, you mentor, and you look, if you see a deficiency, you fix it and you work on it together. I think as a leader, you have to be sometimes a cheerleader, sometimes a disciplinarian, but I think it's, it's the mix of putting everything together and just having a successful outcome for the, the men and women that you work with.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. My question is along, first question is along the same lines as Karen. Officers, do you think about your experience, how has it helped prepare you to assume a leadership role?
Well, like I said, everything I try to do is to try to make a way to make myself stand out a little more. These classes that I go to, the trainings that I go to, I try to make myself available whenever needed. I just think it's vitally important to be, you know, walk the walk, talk the talk. I, I don't wanna say I wanna be a sergeant. Okay, well, what have you done? I try to present you my resume, here it is, you know, in speed. This is, this is why I want it and here's the proof.
And thank you. My second question is that, you know, in a lot of cases, as, in particular as a sergeant, you have to, you have to make a decision or you have to deploy people without maybe necessarily having a lot of time or the benefit of all the information you might like. And, you know, in particular in a sergeant role, you know, other people are looking to you for direction. So I'm wondering if, if you can think of an example of a situation during your career where you actually had to kind of lead a group where perhaps you didn't have the benefit of time or information in, in order to make some decisions and, and deploy people?
Well, I can think of this past summer, there was an incident in Bear Cove Park with an autistic teenager that had, had run away from a group. There was a group home that went out and he had taken off on them. When it was brought to my attention, the, one of the group leaders had come, had found me and explained what, what had happened. And it happened so quick, you know, by the time he reported, 20 minutes had already passed, that this young man was already gone. So I entered the park and I immediately notified dispatch and the OIC as to what was going on. And obviously Bear Cove is almost 500 acre park. It was the middle of the summer, it was, it was so hot out, it was so sunny out. And I knew that, you know, we need a canine unit there, but I knew one canine unit wouldn't, wouldn't suffice, that something, the dog would get drained very quickly in that type of weather. So I, I requested multiple canine units, I requested mutual aid from the environmental police, the Weymouth police. And I also requested a, a state police helicopter to the area. And it's pretty, it's kinda cool, it's impressive. One minute I'm, I'm eating my lunch, you know, in the parking lot, and a gentleman tells me that, you know, this has happened. And within 20 minutes, I have, you know, seven police canines and police helicopter flying overhead. It's, there's no job like it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's awesome. You know, you can't beat it. We had a perimeter set up and by that point, John Marco was working with me, we kinda worked together on how to set up a perimeter. Not long later, Jeff Gilroy showed up with the Metrolec team, we got the public information officer involved, Sergeant Dirth. He put out a reverse 911 call and not long after, it got discovered that this young man was in the Bridges, the Alzheimer's building, in a room with residents that were participating in exercises and they were bouncing a peach ball across the room, and here he is in the room. And the reverse 911 call was what eventually found him. But it, it was something, because at one point, I'm driving with the, the young man's father in the car with me, and he's calling out to his dad and it's like, it hurts, you know? And being able to get his father to Bridges and reunite him with the son was, was something special.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Officer Smith, I'll go formal. I know that you enjoy the respect of your peers. I've seen that firsthand and I think that's, that, that's a tribute to you. My question to you, sir, is what is the work ethos that you would bring to the role of sergeant, were you to be appointed to that position?
I think lead by example would be the, one of the biggest factors, a big thing that I would bring to the table. You set ground rules and you're fair and consistent with everybody. I think that way, everyone knows what to expect from you from the beginning. And without a doubt, honesty and integrity is the utmost important. If, if you don't have it, I have no, there's no place for you with me, as far as I'm concerned.
Good answer. What do you perceive the greatest strength of the department to be and what is it that you have zero tolerance for?
I would say the greatest strength of the men and women of the department. You know, we're always there for each other, we have a common goal of helping this town, reducing crime, reducing fear of crime, working on programs, whether it be community policing with the Field Days, Family Fun Days, Citizens Police Academy. I think that's, you know, the men and women of the asset of the department. In terms of something I would tolerate, like I said, it would be any, any type of lying behavior, just, there's no place for it.
All right. Thank you so much. Before we conclude, is there anything you'd like to add? I must say, I enjoyed hearing you speak tonight. As always, I enjoyed listening to your remarks.
Well, I'd just like to thank you very much for your time. As you said, Ms. Johnson, that, you know, we switched to an assessment this year before we did a multiple choice test. I passed that test, I passed the assessment. The next test could be a Mandarin, I'll figure out a way to do it.
I know you will.
This is very, it's something that's very important to me, I hope I've shown that to you this evening.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the department.
Thanks, Nick. You too. It was nice to meet Henry last week.
Oh, thank you very much.
Is he just wearing it or what? That's adorable. When, the last time we interviewed, he had done, his wife had just given birth, so...
Nice to see ya.
Hey, Lisa, how you doing?
Welcome, Officer. Sorry about the cords. It's kinda part of the test. It's a dexterity test.
Well, I passed that so far.
Yeah, there you go, check.
Good.
Well, good evening, Officer McCracken, although that's a, it's strange for me to say that, because ladies and gentlemen, I had the distinct pleasure and privilege of working with Officer McCracken's father, who in my opinion was one of the best police officers I had the pleasure of working with. So I bet you got a lot of inside tips on how to be a good sergeant. This is a relatively informal format. You get the opportunity to introduce yourself to the town, explain who you are, where you came from, what you do and why you'd like to be sergeant. Then Ms. Johnson, Ms. Power, and me will ask you each a couple of questions, and then you'll have the opportunity to have closing remarks, should you care to do so.
Okay.
So, floor is yours.
I am Lisa McCracken. I grew up in Hingham, graduated from Hingham High School, and I currently live over in Weymouth, right over the bridge. I've been with the department for 20 years, 18 of them assigned to the day shift luckily, a couple on midnights when I first started. I am, I've had the opportunity to actually work as the patrol supervisor on the road in the absence of a sergeant quite a few times, about 727 shifts, maybe a few more than that, since I actually did my resume recently, Super Bowl Sunday, which was a great day. We worked with a great team that day. I am a sexual assault investigator here. I've been able to work with Detective Marquardt quite a bit and a few of the other detectives. I'm on the honor guard and I love being on the honor guard. It's a, it's a, it's a great thing. We get to do so many events and represent the, the department and the town. I have also worked as the co-chair of our Family Fun Day event, which is our summer event that we have, quite a few times. I enjoy that also. And I've also worked with the Citizen Police Academy quite a few times, both of them, both London Ponds and ours here at the station. I'm the department's medical officer and that might be a strange title, probably haven't really heard of that, but I do everything here that has to do with all of our medical equipment. There's a lot of responsibilities, I won't really go down the list, but a few of my favorites that I do get to do is I get to instruct and teach our yearly, our annual recertification in CPR and first responder. I also do the tactical medical training when we have our, our trainings that we do for active shooter. And one of my favorite things is to go out into the public and do the Bleed Stop Program or the Stop the Bleed Program. I recently did that up at Notre Dame Academy. I taught the whole staff and student body there. It was a shorter version of the, the long program, but I, I, it's one of my favorite things to do, just to be able to teach people that those important skills to have. I also am a member of the South Shore Law Enforcement Peer Support Program. We basically will help officers and their families anytime there is a critical or traumatic incident. We will do a, a debrief if we need to, go to any type of, you know, an after, like an event or anything that's, that's, we're needed at. It's, it's a great, great team. I, I am so honored to be a part of that team, it's extremely important. Just a quick example, I was dispatched over to Weymouth very shortly after Sergeant Chestnut was shot, mutual aid by Sergeant Lucas, one of the, the night shift sergeants. And he saw the scene there and he said, "Lisa, you know what, they need you there. Can you come over?" And, and as I was on my way, I started to get the texts about the incident from the team. We usually get texted out to incidents and we can either respond, yes, we can go, or no, we can't. So I was already on my way and I was still trying to really listen to what was going on and, and still didn't have knowledge as to what had happened over there. Showed up, got a little bit more information, and basically supported everybody that, that was there on scene that had been directly involved. The officers were still on scene that were directly involved. When I got there, we got them off to the hospital and then just held the line pretty much. Anybody coming, you know, here, there, some of the fire, fires, some of the, the actual, the civilians who were living there, you know, we kinda just brought them into, and I mean, they were amazing. They were bringing us out, coolers of water and just anything we needed. And it just was, it was one of the, the things that I have been involved in in the team that's really left one of the biggest marks on me. I stayed over there for a full eight hours, my full shift. I was lucky enough that my lieutenant that day allowed me to be there that whole day and just, you know, support what I could over there. I also do the, the data entry with Lieutenant O'Shea and Officer Smith and the, the after visits for opiate overdoses for the Plymouth County Outreach Program. That's a great program also, I am glad to be a part of that. And I'm also a instructor for the RAD Kids and the RAD Women's, which is self-defense and also safety lessons. And we do a, a, a safety camp in the summertime for the kids, and then we also do, we offer the women's version to like Notre Dame and any, I've done it at a few other schools locally also.
Very good. It's tough to sum up a career in such a short period of time.
Oh, I also am an EMT. I'm sorry, I forgot that part. I've been an EMT for 20-plus years, which I'm proud of that also, because it's an extremely, extremely, you know, it's, it's, it's so much involved with keeping that up. It's, it's continuing education hours. It's, every two years, you go for a, like a full, like four-day course that you have to take. So it's, I'm, I'm proud of that and so I did, I wanted to get that in. Thank you.
Should be. Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, so thanks for being here tonight. I noticed in particular, Lisa, that you had to use like a smaller font on the second page to fit in all of the many certifications and trainings and other qualifications that you bring to the table, and it's, it's just really, really impressive.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate you sharing that with us. So one of the questions I wanted to talk with you about was your experience with the Assessment Center and the, the task that they gave you in identifying an issue that's important to the community and sort of build it, bringing a multifaceted approach to solving that problem. I'm wondering if there's a particular issue that you, you would identify as being important to Hingham and how, how might you, if you're confronted with it, how do, how do you deal with it?
I think that we're dealing more with people with mental health issues, in mental health crisis on the streets. I just started today, a, a first day of a crisis intervention training. It's a, it's a training that's five days. The chief and the deputy are wanting a lot of us to be trained and there is another version, a shorter version, that's a day version, and he wants the whole department to be trained. These trainings are so important, because I see that we're dealing with this more than ever now. In the last 10 years, it's probably once or twice every, every four shift rotation, if not more than that. So it's extremely important for us to keep our skills, our communication skills, our, you know, our intervention skills, to be able to help these people and get them maybe some services that they might need.
And in, in, in sort of summing up your, your career for us tonight, which I, as Paul said, is a tough task, I'm sort of wondering if you could talk a little bit about what you see as your leadership style?
I think that my leadership style would be something of involving everybody, you know, a team approach. I think it's really important to have input from the officers, include them in that. You know, it's not, it's not, you know, becoming a sergeant and separating yourself from the officers. It's, it's involving yourself with that team. And I, I mean, I've been lucky enough to do it as a patrol supervisor and I've had those experiences. I just think it's important just to, just to keep everybody on board and the same goals and, and, and team.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as you think about your experience, how has it prepared you to assume a leadership role?
I have had that experience, again, I'm gonna harp on it, but...
Please.
You know, being that I, I've been able to be PS out there, patrol supervisor, I mean, it's, to me, it's so important when I am in that role. I come in, if I don't know that I'm gonna be the PS that day and I'm told at roll call, I immediately switch a gear and I'm like, "Yeah, you know what, I need to be on my toes today. I need to be out there, I need to be going to every call I possibly can." And it's not because I'm questioning what the officers are doing, because we have an, we have an unbelievable group of officers right now who are young and, and new and, I mean, they're, they're so well-trained. I think it's just more, just making sure that I can just stand back and just watch it and just, you know, make sure that they make the right decisions and, and, you know, that we're all doing the same thing.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. It's, you know, I saw on your resume, and I'm, I'm a numbers person, so I appreciate the 5,800 hours of being a patrol supervisor, but...
Yeah. Yeah.
I also appreciate some of the description of it because, you know, sometimes you see these things and you're not, you're not, you're not always sure
Right.
What goes into it.
Yeah.
And it's also really helpful to, to get your impression of, you know, as you said, you kind of, you know, switch into a different gear. That's, that's really helpful. My other question, I'm, I'm going to ask you to think about just an example in your career, and, you know, as, in particular as a sergeant, there are going to be situations where you're going to have to go in and make a decision very quickly, perhaps without the benefit of all the information you need or that you'd like to have. And, and because in a sergeant role, you're probably deploying other people and giving other people direction. It's really important to be decisive in times when you don't maybe have all the information you need. I wonder if in, in, in your very distinguished career, if there's an example of a time when you had to do that, that you could share with us to just give us a little insight into how you might handle a situation like that?
So recently, we had a call for a, a female who is in, in a mental health crisis. She had called looking for help, was parked somewhere in the south side of town, we really didn't know at that time. I actually was patrol supervisor that day, and the call started, started as just that and then rolled into something so quickly. I mean, that's how quickly, you know, we're out there and it can go from one to 10 in like no time. And that's what happened with this. They encountered her, she fled, and after an extremely short pursuit, she crashed her car into a telephone pole, a fire hydrant, and into a ditch, and the car caught fire. So en route up there, I'm obviously thinking, I turned the radio up extremely loud because I have the sirens on, trying to get up there, you know, I, I, I just wanted to be up there as, as quickly as I could because I wanted to be there. And once I got up there, and that was after the accident, I had heard, you know, on my way that the officers were giving great, great descriptions of, of what was happening, and they were calling for all of the right resources that we needed up there. So again, that team that day, they were so capable and so, and doing such a good job that when I showed up, I knew exactly what I was faced with. You know, we were still working to get this woman out of that car, grabbing fire extinguishers, running over to try to, you know, put this, this fire out in the car. We ended up getting her out, getting her onto the stretcher, getting her into the ambulance, and she was on her way. So I had taken radio, you know, basically control of the radio. I don't like the word control, but it's, so it takes off a little bit of the pressure off the other officers and they can continue to focus on what they're doing. So, you know, I basically got on scene and just started to go back and forth with dispatch, you know, and just let them know what else we needed up there and where we were and what was happening. And once we had that, that woman in the ambulance, and it all, you know, the, it was chaos, but I kind of just looked around and, and we were at the point where it was starting to calm. And then I like to kind of go around and ask everybody to add that extra calm to the chaos. I like to ask everybody, are you okay? Are you hurt? And sometimes the officers don't even realize, they don't even, you know, they didn't, they just broke, they just broke a window, they just, I mean, you know, the fire was coming from this car, they were breathing, you know, fumes, I mean, it's not, they don't, never were once thinking about themselves because they were thinking about, you know, getting, making the situation better and getting this woman where she needed to be. And I just walked around to every single person, even the Weymouth officers that were there, and I'm like, are you okay? Are you okay? Are you okay? And I feel like that that just brings back, you know, they can look and they can just hit the reset button and just bring that calm, like it's, I mean, it's, we're never going to, that adrenaline is never going to come completely down, but I do think that it brings it down a level enough that we're able to just to, you know, continue with that, that, on that scene.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you think you can get addicted to adrenaline?
It's, it, it is a definitely, you know, there's a, there's that dump and then there's that heartbeat and it, yeah.
That's not one of the questions I was asking, but I just curious. I recall those experiences.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
My question, Lisa, is this, for Officer McCracken. What kind of work ethos would you bring to the role of sergeant were you to be appointed to this position?
So I have a, a strong moral compass, and I really fall back on the, on the, you know, what I was brought up on, integrity, honesty, hardworking, and caring about other people. I mean, those are just basics and, and they, and they almost, they almost shadow, you know, our mission statement here. And those are important things, you know, being brought up in, in a law enforcement family, you know, those things are stressed.
Sure.
You know, especially honesty, you know, always honest. And I'm honest with, with, you know, the coworkers that I work with.
Well, that leads me to my next question, which I think you've answered, but just to be consistent, what do you think the greatest strength of the police officer is, and what is the one thing that you will not tolerate as a sergeant?
Honesty. I, I do believe that that is one of our most important, important, important things we have to have. What I won't tolerate, I guess you're, you're meaning from other officers, if I was to become sergeant?
Yeah, I think you've given me the answer.
Okay.
You won't tolerate lying?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's a pleasure to talk to you. At this point, if you'd like to say anything in conclusion, we'd welcome that. Otherwise, thank you so much for coming in.
Okay, I, I would just like to say that I'm grateful, thankful to all of you and to the chief and the deputy for this opportunity. I signed up for this, this whole thing that's been since October last minute, and this has all been for me. I have to tell you that I haven't even told my parents that this is happening.
I hope they're not watching our meeting.
Well, so now that this is all where we are.
They don't know.
Yeah. They may be watching, hi mom and dad if you're watching. But yeah, so I, I've really kept this to myself and it's been for me, and I just appreciate this opportunity. And to be part of this group out here, this group of, of gentlemen, officers who are also in here interviewing for this, I'm, it's, I'm proud. We're a great group. I mean, the future's really bright here. We're proud you're here.
That's a great close. Well done, and thank you for your service to the town
Thank you.
And to the department. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good legacy.
Well done. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Yep.
Let's run to the ladies room for a second.
Sure.
It'll probably take them a minute to get settled in.
Oh, yes.
Good evening. Nice to meet you.
Sir.
Welcome, officer. Thank you.
Officer, thank you.
Okay, before we begin on this, ladies and gentlemen, in the spirit of full disclosure, Officer Sullivan and I share a common ancestor who at one time served on the Boston Police. Jeremiah is my nephew. And prior to this interview tonight, I consulted with town council as to the appropriateness of me participating in this, and he indicated that as long as I filed a disclosure, it was something that the law allowed me to do. So I have done that. But all that aside, welcome. Our format's informal, you're the last one, but certainly not the least. We give everybody an opportunity to tell us, tell the town something about themselves, why you want to be sergeant, and then the three of us will each ask a couple of questions. And then you'll be given an opportunity to make a closing statement should you wish to do so. So, floor is yours, sir.
I appreciate it. This is an excellent opportunity to meet you guys and have an informal discussion. My name is Jeremiah Sullivan. I'm a lifelong Hingham resident. I am married, I'm the father of three, excellent kids. I was educated in the town. I played youth sports here. In my high school days, I coached youth sports at the request of a couple of high school I was really interested in becoming a police officer and obviously moving up in the ranks. Around me as a young child and throughout my life, individuals dedicated to service were a constant. My grandmother was heavily involved in the Catholic Church, uncles in law enforcement, and aunt in corrections, a cousin in the military. And all this, all this familial and people around me, they, they heavily influenced me and brought me down this path. I had the opportunity to go to UMass Boston where I pursued bachelors in criminal justice during that time period. I coached freshmen and high school lacrosse at Hingham, got to know a lot of the youths during that time period, which would serve me well in the years to come, which at that time I didn't know I would be hired and I would be in this position, but it, it worked out very well. After that, I was lucky to be hired at the age of 23. I was academy trained, walking in the door. I was trained by several very influential FTOs, field training officers, that guided me, molded me. I took a lot of nuggets of information, knowledge. I emulated the way they dealt with the public, the way they handled themselves, conducted business. They were very influential and they happen to be key members of leadership now, and I couldn't be happier for them. They've always inspired me to seek more, and I want to walk in their shoes and do that for the guys below me. In my career, walking, walking in the door, I worked midnight shift. I was a 23-year-old kid and I walked into a roll call room filled with guys with a combined experience of maybe 150 years of police. You know, I was someone, I was a new school kid and I was getting introduced to the old school. It was very valuable because I was able to take a lot of their, their wealth and knowledge, their experiences, and combine it with what I had just been trained. Policing is constantly evolving for the better. We're constantly getting more training, and that was an invaluable experience for me. Moving on, I saw training through my 10-year career. I was lucky enough to go to, be selected to go to FTO school and be that mentor figure, that guiding figure for the new officers that come in, responsible for their direct leadership, I'm responsible for making sure they're up to date and proficient in criminal law, constitutional law, motor vehicle law, issues of officer safety, make sure they're dealing with the public in a professional and respectful manner, and serving the town in a high standard, good quality of service. That's, I take that very personal. Continuing on, I became a firearms licensing officer. I deal with the public on a routine basis, interviews. I've made a lot of friendships and relationships out of that. It's, it's good. It brings a lot of people into my office, brings them into my world, I get to know them a little bit more. I continued my education and I got a master's degree from Carri College as recently as May 2018. I felt that was an excellent program. I went through the program with several local agencies. We worked on projects, interviews, and it was an overall excellent experience. And lastly, to wrap up, I'd like to say hi to my kids that are watching tonight, Jeremiah and Jack, they're at home, I'm not sure where the camera is. But my goal here is to be introduced to you, put my best foot forward, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity, the potential to become a sergeant and lead the new young generation of guys that have had the privilege to train in the FTO program, so.
Well, thank you very much. I've tracked your career path with interest, obviously, so some of this I've heard before. Karen?
Well, we, we appreciate you telling it to Mary and I anyway tonight, and, you know, impressive resume, particularly impressive educational credentials, so congratulations on
Thank you.
Your commitment to that. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the issues that are facing this community and how, how you would bring your considerable skill set to addressing those. So I understand as part of the assessment process, you're faced with an issue and you've got to think sort of globally or multifacetedly about how to solve it. So I wonder if, if there's a particular issue that you see as being important to Hingham and how might you approach it, not only from a policing standpoint, but drawing in other resources?
As police officers, in 2019, we're faced with a lot of issues, particularly in this community. Over the past 10 years, I've seen a rise in mental health calls. In the beginning, I was working midnights, so they would be a little more sporadic, but now I feel like they're almost daily. We have protocols, policies in place, but I feel like as a nation in, as a whole, we're kind of dropping the ball on getting these people what they need. It's, it's a constant battle. I was on a call recently, as recent as a week ago, I was on it with a, with a sergeant who I work well with, and we were dealing with a young girl who was having some mental health issues. We have typical protocols that we can follow, and based on the scenario, we were, we were looking down that road, but I was speaking with the sergeant and we took an outside-of-the-box approach. We wanted to kind of, kind of tailor it to fit her needs better, because at the end of the day, we're, I'm trying to provide the highest quality of service and make sure the individual is getting what they need. And some, a cookie cutter response isn't going to solve that. So we, we made a plan. It was a little unique. I'm not going to get into the details because I don't want to
Sure, sure.
Violate any of that, but it was, the family was very receptive. We talked to some support that the family had. They were in agreement, some professionals, and I think, I think it worked out well.
That's a great answer, thank you. And I think you've, you've alluded to this in your earlier remarks, but, you know, you're, you now would be stepping into a, a leadership role in the Hingham Police Department, so I'd, I'd like to understand how you view the leadership skill set that a sergeant needs and how you would execute that.
Leadership skills that I would bring on the table, and I believe that a lot of the men and women that you've spoken to tonight, leading by example, leading from the front. In that situation that I just explained, I was prepared to make that decision on my own. I had an officer there at a higher rank, so I want, obviously going through the chain of command, I wanted to get his blessing and approval, but I would have had no problem making that decision on my own. Conduct myself with a lot of integrity, I believe, treating everyone with respect, and that's, that's how
That's great.
How I would
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, and I would just say for your children watching at home that when you interview for a job, it's always kind of stressful, but to have to do it on TV with a lot of people watching, I think just takes an additional amount of courage. So my hat's off to you and to your fellow officers for, for putting yourself out there and participating in this process. I'm interested, you've talked about it a little bit, but in terms of what aspects of your experience have prepared you to step into a leadership role in the police department? Are there a couple of experiences that, that you think uniquely qualify you to, to be a sergeant at this time in the Hingham Police Department?
Absolutely. I would speak to an incident that occurred several years ago. I was working the midnight shift in the patrol supervisor capacity. That would mean that the sergeant was off that evening, or sergeant or lieutenant. So I was the senior-most man. Around 1:30, we had a call in South Hingham for some missing juveniles. I believe they were in middle school, middle school girls, so obviously a high priority. Send several officers up there, start interviewing the parents, the last known location, got some information, put a, be on the lookout out for who we're looking for. As I was resolving that, and this is just a brief condensed version, but as we were resolving that, an active motor vehicle break-in was occurring on the north side of Hingham, down on the 3A, 3A area. We had an officer down there who put eyes on an individual that was in a vehicle backpack, rifling through cars. So I was resolving the juvenile issue, I started making my way towards him. I instructed several other cars to come down there, start forming a perimeter, called the lieutenant who was working the desk, and I requested a K-9, a foot A foot pursuit ensued. We had K-9 track the individual and resulted in a bite due to non-compliance and some other factors, and an eventual arrest. It was...
It's quite a night.
You know, I don't want to say I got lucky, but things worked out very well, and, you know, and that's all due to the capability, the competency of the guys, teamwork, and it's a proud moment, you know, because you want to get the job done and you want to get it done right.
My second question was to ask for an example, and thank you for providing, you know, for providing it. When you think back on that incident, what qualities do you think helped you be successful that night?
My good working relationship with my coworkers, my ability to multitask and think, think on my feet and active... I'm just going to take a step back. I'm always thinking about what-ifs, you know. As a young officer driving in for the midnight shift, I was always running through different calls through my head. Should this present itself tonight? How am I going to handle it? And I was just, I'm in the pattern of doing that because I want to be prepared, I want to make sure I know what I'm doing, that the guys know what they're doing, and that I complete the job at a high level. So I was able to multitask that night, get the resources that we needed, communicate with the guys, create a game plan, a tactical plan, and things worked out well.
Thank you so much.
Jeremiah, a couple of questions, same as the other officers were asked. What do you perceive to be the greatest strengths of a police officer, and what is it that you have zero tolerance for?
The greatest strengths of a police officer are honesty and integrity, and having the community's support like we have here and the public's trust, because that legitimizes our authority to operate and conduct business. It's extremely important to me. I'm very honest, very transparent with every individual that I deal with, and I, I'm a communicator, so I'll walk every individual through every process. And incident that we're dealing with, sometimes it nauseam, sometimes people get a little annoyed by it, but I think it's very important, you know. We work closely with the community, we need their assistance in solving crimes, solving issues of disorder and quality of life issues. That trust is extremely important. Something that I would have no tolerance for is a mistake of the heart. A mistake of the mind can be corrected through training, through guidance, through counseling. A mistake of the heart, that's something that's in someone that I'm not going to be able to fix, I'm not going to be able to reach that person. I'll try. I'll give every effort, but that's what I have no tolerance for.
Thank you. Good answer. In close, is there anything you'd like to add before we... Thank you for your time here tonight.
Thank you. Thank the board, town administrator, assistant town administrator. It was a pleasure, it was an excellent opportunity to get out here and talk with you guys. I love the job, very enthusiastic, and I'm looking forward to serving at a higher level and helping the guys that came below me just as I was assisted, guided by the lieutenants and sergeants now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
It was very nice meeting you.
Well done.
Well done. Thank you.
Very nice to meet you. Thank you.
Should I run now?
Sure, yeah. You know, yeah, sure. We're going to take just a brief recess, but, you know, before we get on to the next topic, I really hope that the town got a good insight into the quality of the men and women that work on our police force, because, you know, as much as I'd like to think that, you know, police work stays the same, it doesn't. It evolves, and I think that what you saw tonight is living proof of that. So we're going to get into the next portion of the meeting, which is the school department budget, but before we do, people are filing in now, and we will get to it in short order. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome one and all. Let's wait until Mr. Curley's through talking, and then we'll start. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen at home, this is a joint meeting of the school committee and the advisory committee for school budget presentation. But before we begin, from this board, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Gallo, because traditionally, this is about the only time of the year that we see her before us. So we welcome her, but more particularly, we put together a certificate of appreciation, and I'd like to read it to you now, which, and this will be presented by the three of us, to you, Dr. Gallo. This is a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and this certificate is presented to Dr. Dorothy Gallo in recognition of 56 years of exemplary service as a teacher, administrator, and superintendent to the town of Hingham. September 1st, 1963 to July 31st, 2019. The Board of Selectmen wishes to express our deepest appreciation for your dedication to providing quality education and opportunities for all students, and for upholding the traditions of educational excellence and innovation in our community. And each of us has signed this, and this is a pleasure to present this to you, doctor. I will have to say as an aside that when I was a young boy, I went to this school and Dr. Gallo taught math here, and without offending you, madam, I avoided your class.
It shows.
So, what a run. This town is so fortunate to have you, truly. So thank you. Thank you deeply and sincerely. So now we get into the, I don't know how many budgets this is for you, but it's the 2019 budget, so. We ready? Where's Mr. Ferris? There he is.
Thank you very much. I'm John Ferris. I'm the Director of Business and Support Services for the school system, and this is the operating budget for FY '20, the proposal from the administration to the Board of Selectmen in AdCom, February 5th, 2019. And I have about an hour, and we will go through these slides.
Do you want the lights on or off?
If...
Off? Just slightly dim. Off, please?
Okay. So the operating budget, the FY '20 budget comments and challenges, really, this, for overall staffing, our requests this year reflect new roles for central office, HR, and support.
That's good.
That's good. Also, it reflects enrollment growth at the high school for regular education, needs for special populations such as English language learners and middle school adjustment counselor, and special education teacher and pilot programs, which we'll tell you about as we get into the context of the presentation. Special education generally is up 4.46%, with net tuition essentially flat due to an increased circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is up some $300,000 from the previous year. Teacher account is up by 3.5 teacher FTEs and two pilot programs, and those pilot programs have possible offsets as well, which we'll explain as we get into the presentation. Currently in this budget, there's retirements and leaves of absence. There's five known retirements right now in the budget. We knew of two when we first created the budget, and then we learned three since January, three of additional retirements. Also, we won't be knowing who's returning until March 1st, okay? So by March 1st, all the teachers need to tell us whether they're, teachers that are on LOAs in FY '19 need to tell us if they'll be returning in FY '20. So as we continue to go on the next month or so, we'll learn more about what the staffing will be looking like for fiscal '20. Yeah, currently, we assume that all of those FY '20, FY '19 leaves of absence are returning in '20 in the budget assumptions right now. Collective bargaining and individual contracts, we're in the third year of the collective bargaining. In 2020, we'll be in the third year of collective bargaining contracts. But this budget does include an allowance for non-contract or personnel on individual contracts, some personnel, but no major collective bargaining unit. From an overall enrollment perspective, and this seems to be changing daily now, numbers that are anticipated to be slightly down for FY '20, with the middle school and elementary each down and the high school up significantly by 54 students, although we just got the enrollment report today for February, and we just found that we increased another six elementary students from January. October to January, already, we're up, from the October 1 counts, we're up 21 students. So we don't have all the details about what, I don't have the chart for today, but those are numbers certainly that we have to look at. They just got compiled today. So I think, you know, likely it's the, I know from October 1 to January 1, Foster was up eight students, so I'm presuming the bulk of that is from the shipyard project. Other cross and growth areas, including mandates and professional development, so we'll have continuing professional development goals needed for social emotional programs within the district. Also, the new state initiatives in civics education and computer science and STEM changes in Massachusetts core curriculum, and that's happening in 2020. There's growth in high school enrollment. I mean, they're up 55. That bubble from the middle school that had been passing through is now entering into the high school. And then the, we also have a growth in the district of English language learners, and anticipate that those will get a little bit higher as I think a large company, international companies actually moved into the area, and we anticipate that there'll be additional students, English language learners, moving into town, especially in the shipyard. And then a few, several years back, we had new health and PE graduation requirements, so we need some staffing to complete that, to make those requirements available to all students. So there's some visuals here, so it's not all dense with text. You can see how the kindergarten enrollments have moved, you know, through a number of years. There was a time when, we're looking at around 284. Our budget projections are figuring about the same as last year right now, of about 290. What we do, we just take the previous number, and we, with Foster, because we had the development there, we added one to each grade level in order to project out our preliminary enrollments. But that number up there says 284, so for 1819, that's the current number. You can see how the K through 12 enrollment has been trending. We're, you know, we hit a peak a couple of years ago, but this decline is not going to stay. We've also had an enrollment study done, because in anticipation of Foster and actually master planning, we did an enrollment study with Nezdeck, and through that study, we learned that we're actually going to grow a couple hundred people over the next five years. Okay, so we were at around 42, we may be getting up to around 45. So we're not going to, there's not going to be significant shrinkage from what those projections would say right now. We just got some updated data, but we, and Nezdeck's is supposed to project them into their model, but they, we don't have those results yet. But we do have our eye on enrollment. Hingham High School and middle school enrollment change, and you can see how those charts are trending. You see the red line is the middle school, they've dipped down a little bit, but you see that that bubble is, you know, moving into the high school. So high school enrollment has consistently been moving up over the past several years, and if you were to project 2020 here, it would be projected up as well. This chart here, so the K through 12, this is October, 4184 for the January enrollment number, and we got 1904 in, for the elementary. That was, I think, 1899 or actually 18, 15 lower, I think, in October, and this is the January number. The middle school at 1020, and the class sizes, the classes that are over 25 or the sections, we have 18 of 25, you know, or 7.6% of the classes. Now, we've done a good job, because that's down from the previous year, but, you know, still is 18 of 238. And in the high school, there's 32 of 328, or 9%, 9.8% of the sections at the high school actually have class sizes of over 25. Other students for whom we have fiscal responsibility for, we have a preschool program for ages three to four. There's 75 of, you know, whom, 49 of those 75 in the pre-K program have IEPs. And the out-of-district children with special needs, so those out-placed tuitions, is 47, and the high school vocational students, we have six. There's six this year, we anticipate six for 2020 as well. Right now, although we won't know the final numbers until April 1st. We know that there's one application pending, but there's been no results yet, okay? We don't know if they've been accepted. This chart is the enrollment that we do, this was the January enrollment. This chart will be updated for February. That's what we learned today. I know that the number has increased. The increase is now, in January, we're 15. I think in February, I've been told, we're 21, but I have to take a good look at this chart tomorrow, and we'll determine where the growth is, but we believe it's six new kindergartens.
In this year's?
In this year's class. In this year's class. So, so this is the budget number, so that is just sort of an overview teeing up, you know, what the structure looks like. And this budget is 5.39%. So the, if you take a look before the big bar on the right, those are the changes that we made post-January 3rd. Does everybody have a big copy of this? There are big copies. Do you have big copies? Okay, good. Good. All right. Because it's very difficult to see these numbers.
It's John Asher font.
Right. So you all, everyone has a big copy of it, right? So you can see it?
Big copy coming.
Okay. Yeah, no, yeah. I apologize, I didn't want to waste a lot of paper, so I didn't put full slides on the whole packet. So the, so in the bottom right, you see the overall budget is up 5.39% versus previously, it was up, when we first admitted this budget back in January 3rd, gave it to the school committee, we were at 5.64. That reflects three new retirements that occurred, and then also some adjustment on electricity. My forecast was high, we took a look, I didn't like the number, so we took a look and see if we could come up with another view of it, and we were able to break it down to the individual schools and drop that from a budgetary perspective by about $60,000. And we'll get into more of the details of this budget now. This slide just shows you the changes. So this is... So this is... If we have teacher retirements in regular education, teacher retirements in special education, and the electricity declines. So what this chart actually shows is how we came about the $129,000 reduction. In that, you know, some, as you go through this track, and typically what I'll do is I'll create the budget for January 3rd, and then instead of making changes to the budget all along as I go along, I just create an overlay sheet. So then I know what the ups and downs are to the budget. So, you know, with this, the electricity is down, the retirements are down. But also with that electricity change, some of the PRS electricity, which is higher, actually went up a little bit. So there's some ins and outs, not a lot, but we'll track these things entirely through the budget process until we get to the end game. So this, I believe everybody has big copies of this one as well. Okay, these are... When you take a look at this chart, this is actually the budget items that are included in this base budget of 5.39 right now. Okay? There's a total, the grand total down at the bottom is $1,017,002. And they include items such as the personnel director for central office and for the school district and central office support. This is a very high priority item for the school committee. You know, we view this also as a structural deficit because we've been without this for a very long time. In many years, we have had it on our radar, but we just have not been able to... We opted for teachers instead, but we're sort of at a critical point at this point. So it becomes a very high priority. We have in the 2,300 account math specialists that we deferred a number of items. So we got requests for these, but we actually deferred those. So you see they're not included in the base budget right now, but there are teachers at the high school and the middle school. And we have a kindergarten, a provisional kindergarten teacher in this budget. We have computer science for materials for an AP computer science class of $5,000. And we also have an adjustment counselor at the middle school. Last year, we were fortunate enough to add a guidance counselor to the middle school. So this year, we need to get an adjustment counselor. We actually had some Title I funding, so we're able to fund some part of an adjustment counselor at the middle school this year. We don't know if that funding will continue, so we have that as incorporated into the overall budget. Student activity stipends, a small amount of money. 2023 really enrollment, due enrollment growth into providing, you know, activities for the students. And then also this, the town technology assessment. I'm not sure about the status of the town adding the .5 to the town technology staff, but, you know, this is, represents 20% of the school department's share of that additional .5 if that position were to go through. And then the 2,300, the special ed, we have a number of activities going on in there. One has to do with an ABA contract for an in-district pilot. Okay? And the concept there is that we would actually hire a new ABA. Currently, we have a contracted ABA for halftime, .5 FTE. And the thought is that what we would do is we would harness somebody and for that .5, they'd take over that .5. And the other .5, they would actually do home service evaluations. Okay? And so they'd go out to the homes and they'd determine what type of services are necessary. Today, we do all that on a contract basis. Okay? And then once we determine the services, then we could prescribe those services and we could actually get a visitor home behavior specialist on our own payroll that would go out to provide those services. And it would significantly reduce our contract expense because we would be able to control the expense, we'd know what the services are, and, you know, we don't have to pay all the contract to market. This would be our personnel that we actually did this with. So, you know, when you look at this, the numbers on this sheet, you're seeing there's an ABA contract in the amount of $80,000, and the visiting home behavior specialist is projected at $45,000. And there's a $111,550 offset in contracted services. So, and we looked at, we look at this as a pilot. You know, you see the net effect of that. It's going to cost $13,000, but from an operational standpoint, we think that this is a good pilot to undertake because it could lead us in a direction of really controlling better costs and providing better quality services. You know, and I think these projections that we have on here are actually conservative. Another special ed program pilot that we have is a language-based program, and this would be at the middle school. We don't have a language-based program, so we... So trying to work with other communities to perhaps, we would do the middle school and other community, and they do the high school, and some other, they do the elementary. But the possibility here with this language-based program would be that we could avoid future out-of-district tuitions and provide a better education in a more inclusive setting for, you know, many of our kids. So this could be a potential offset. We don't have no of any potential offsets right now, so nothing's incorporated into the budget. But we do believe that this would be an excellent program within the district and actually provide a better service and possibly reduce costs over time. We have in this budget two inclusion facilitators, and those are... That's one at the high school and one at the middle school. And I can let Suzanne talk more about the inclusion facilitators, but from a layman's standpoint, or my standpoint, what these are, these are special education teachers that can actually provide professional development to our regular education teachers to ensure that the kids are getting all the included services that they should get and sort of manage that process within each of the schools. So, you know, that would be... That would keep us in compliance and would also provide a good professional development piece for our regular education teachers. Huh? You're right there. But we'll talk about, I think we have another slide, and then we'll talk about that after. And I can have Suzanne come in and tell you some more about that. And then there was a request for another, for 1.0 occupational therapist, and we sort of deferred that. We believe that it's necessary, but what we really need right now is just one day of contract hours. So there's $18,144 in the budget for one more day of contract services for OT. In the 2,300 account, which is special ed transportation, we have another pilot, actually, that's not a pilot, it's a cost-saving reduction plan whereby we would hire, we would have three van drivers and we'd lease three small minivan vehicles. Okay? These are less expensive vehicles than our big 7D vehicles. And we would take over three known expensive runs. And in doing so, we would actually have an offset to transportation of $123,000. So that is actually a reduction in the budget of $13,451. And that's a conservative estimate. Okay? We know that these runs exist. We know that we can, in fact, do them. So we know those costs that we would actually be saving. It's all up here. So the next two slides, and you have them in the package, it just takes a different cut at these numbers, okay? Because we met with AdCom a couple of weeks ago and, or maybe last week, and Donna had asked us if we could maybe take a different look at the pieces to, you know, determine whether they fit as a mandate or whether they fit as a structural deficit or whether they represent local services. And so when you look at these, the special education ones are mandates. So you see up there, we also have in this budget like 1.5 special ed teachers at each of the elementary students, each of the elementary schools, but that is sitting under level services. You'd see mandated cost savings, okay? So we believe that the ABA contract, you know, that in-district program with the visiting home behavior specialist is actually a mandate with some cost savings that, you know, will certainly be generated and provide better service. And also the van drivers are a mandate with cost savings because we need to provide the special education transportation. From a structural deficit standpoint, we categorize in here the central office personnel director and the central office support. Just the, you know, the district has grown and, you know, contracts have gotten more complicated, the workforce is actually changing. This is a very key, critical position for us this year. From regular education, the secondary health PE position is a structural deficit because we've already satisfied, we've already made the requirements, and we need to provide the staff that can fulfill those requirements. The adjustment counselor, we have the social and emotional... The social, emotional aspects of that adjustment counselor. We have the students there. There's not enough support for that. We're actually using some Title I money this year to provide some service, but that support's got to continue. So, you know, we're viewing that as a structural deficit because we just don't have the function in order to provide the necessary service. And then we, from an athletic standpoint, we have a crew coach in here for $6,117. The town technology assessment, if town were to go forward, you know, we want to put our share in, we want to contribute. I believe that the town thinks that's a structural deficit. So, you know, as we need the service, so we put it into that category. And then the inclusion facilitators are also in that structural deficit category. They don't exist today. They can certainly align themselves to ensure that all the kids are getting the full functionality of the curriculum and that we remain in compliance and we provide all the services that are necessary under the IEP. So we see that as a structural deficit. The mandate, the language-based program, okay? That can be a structural deficit. We don't have one today and it's mandated, so we have to have those. So there's another category of structural deficit with a mandate. Moving over to the second page, this is where the level services components come. The FTEs at the high school and the... And those are all because we have enrollment growth there. So we have enrollment growth, we need to provide more sections, we need to provide more service to those students. So we view those as level services. The computer AP science, AP, that's $5,000 worth of materials really, and that's not a recurring charge. But that's a program that we think is very important, and we view that as a level services as well. You can see something like a lab coordinator, it's been requested, but we have not included that in the budget. And the student activity stipends, as students, as we increase our student base, they need to have their activities. So we put that in the level services. And special education teachers at the elementary schools. Right now, three of the schools have 4.5 special education teachers. This would add a .5 special ed to each one of those schools. And then there would actually be an offset there for paras. Okay? So we'd reduce paras somewhat. It wouldn't be a total washer, one-to-one. And I don't show any offset on here because I'm not 100% confident. We know it would decrease some somewhat, but I didn't put any number in there because I wasn't sure what it was going to decrease. So that's a cut of what the new initiatives are when we look at those from, in those categories. Oh, that was this one, okay. So I guess I just articulated a lot of these. So the new items included in the proposed budget, so central office, and those total $121,182 represent 11.91% of the total amount that we're requesting in addition. Not the total amount we're requesting, but the additional 1.17 items that we've actually, $1.17,612 that we're requesting for additional items. Regular instruction, that's 6.3 teachers, 4.3 secondary and 2.0 elementary. And one of those elementaries is an ELL teacher. And the other one is kindergarten, a provisional kindergarten. And also the AP computer science. So that's, those regular instruction categories represent 46.03% of the $1.17 million. Special education, there's 2.5 teachers, one secondary and 1.5 elementary. And that one secondary is the lab instructor, the language-based instructor. Okay? And the 2.0 inclusion facilitators that I spoke of. And then we also have the applied behavior analyst and the visiting behavior specialist, but with the offset there. So when we look at special education, it's actually continued. Special education is continued on the next page. We have the specialized vans with the offset, and also the increase in OT hours. So those items represent 33.47 of that $1.17 million, or $340,666. Counseling and guidance, this is the adjustment counselor at the middle school and the added guidance days. Okay? But this is for scheduling at the middle school. The schedule gets very complex, so we add one extra guidance day to each one of the guidance counselors at a cost of $2,000. That represents 7.11% of the $1.17 million. And then other requests, which is the crew coach, activity stipends, and the town technology amount, which really represent 1.47 of the additional funding requested. So there's, in your packet, there's actually charts here, so you can kind of see the size of the pie and, you know, regular education, special education, custodian maintenance, principals, counseling, regular transportation, school committee and central office, athletics, student activities. So you see regular education is at 52% of the budget, special ed is at 24%. And of course, custodian maintenance supports the whole organization, right? So, you know, it's hard to like separate those. Principals and building leadership at 4%, counseling at 5%, transportation at 2%, and school committee and central office at 3%. And these are all based on the original budget numbers. So we've, since we do some of those, so the charts really were reflected from that first amount of money. But they wouldn't, the size of the pie or the variance wouldn't be that significant with the changes that we've made to date. Let me take a look at the special education enrollment. This is as of January 19, INP enrollment by school. So you can take a look at this chart. You see that we have all K through 12 is 12.57% out of our base of 4184 students. Not included on this chart is like 49 students with IEPs that are in the pre-K program, or the 47 out-of-district students. This is just in district K through 12. Okay? So you can see how they break up into individual schools. You have the numbers, so I don't see, I need to read the numbers. The out-of-district tuitions. So this will just give, this chart will just give some perspective on what the cost of the out-of-district tuitions are. And also VOTEC. So VOTEC's included on this sheet as well, so this isn't all special education. But private day schools, I have 47 students, we have 15 in private day schools. And those tuitions may range anywhere between $40,926 and $135,075. Private residential schools, there's 13 of them projected in that 47. And when we look at those, we look at the known tuitions, we're projecting known tuitions at rates for known rates plus a 3% increase in that rate because we don't always know what the OSD has set the rates for. We may learn more about that later. Sometimes there's schools that are looking for a restructure, it could be potentially higher. Sometimes they say, no, you're only getting 2%. But, you know, we would look at that, and when that information comes out, we certainly restructure the budget to show that as some type of change, you know, in my change tracking. So 13 students, and the tuition range there is $64,102 up to $288,322. So that... So, last year, that number would have been a little bit bigger on the upside, but that's just because it's always going to be predicated on the mix that we know at any given point in time. Other public schools, there's two of them that could be like, you know, a Situate or Braintree. They have a program similar to like if we implement our lab pilot at the middle school, okay? We could tuition in some students from some other schools to use our lab pilot and perhaps if one of the other schools did a lab pilot for high school, we can tuition some kids into that. So, these are similar, this other public school one. They have a program we don't have, we send them there. Those tuitions range anywhere from $32,095 to $48,760. So, you know, there's a range there, there's two, so you do the math from that, right? South Shore Educational Collaborative, there's 15, and those tuitions would range anywhere between 47, 45,799 to 73,984. And then other local collaboratives, so that could be Pelham Area Collaborative or some other local collaborative in the area. And those tuitions may range between $55,467 to $61,631. And then the Vo-Tec for the FY '20 plan, we have six students scheduled and they're all continuing over from this current year. We didn't have any seniors graduate from there. And the tuition ranges, and those may be South Shore, could be Waymouth, and we have South Shore Vo-Tec, and we also have Norfolk Aggie in these numbers. And those tuitions range 95, 9544 to 22813. And of course, Waymouth is the 9544. So, that, that number on the budget perspective is down slightly and the reason, we have the same kids, the reason it's down slightly is because the mix has just changed a little bit and there's not a special ed increment in the, in the current, in the base next year, so. The common special ed staffing, so this is where we are right now in 2019. FTEs for the 2300B, which is a special ed, we have 27.5 elementary and we have 10 middle schools, seven high school. There's five speech and language therapists, there's two OT therapists, there's 6.2 reading specialists, and there's 1.0 BCBA, which is a, it's not contracted services, but it's not in the HEA, it's in, on a separate contract. Now, in addition, what we do to subsidize those, not subsidize, but supplement, the hours and the services that we need are actually contracted services. So, we contract out for additional OT, PT hours, speech hours, ABA, home services, home tours. And the, the, the beauty of contracting is you can scale up or scale down as you need. But when it gets to a point where you know that you're going to have that need, that's where sometimes it makes that sense to try that pilot program to take those contract hours in-house, which will ultimately be cheaper, and lower that contract rate, which, you know, the hours can get very, very expensive from these contractors. And now, in addition, we got central office leadership, so that's the, the director of special education, the assistant director and two support people in, within the central office. There's 2700B counselors, there's 4.0 at the elementary level. And the early childhood coordinator, we have a .7, so that coordinates that pre-K program, okay? And then school psychologists at the secondary level, there's a 3.0 school psychologist. The counselors at the elementary and the secondary psychologists, they act as the special ed chairs for each of the, each of their respective buildings. Continuing on in special ed staffing, so what's proposed in here, it's just, this is another view of what's proposed in here. So, we have inclusion facilitators. There's the 1.0 for high school and a 1.0 inclusion facilitator at the middle school. We have the language-based program that would be at the middle school. And then in the elementary special education, we have 1.5 or .5 for each of the, the other schools. So, it's a 1.5 elementary teachers as well. Related services into special education, we have an adjustment counselor, a second adjustment counselor at the high school. Last year, we had requested an adjustment counselor and a guidance counselor, okay? And we subsequently sort of removed, retracted one from the, from the request and then we chose a guidance counselor over the adjustment counselor. So, this year, we're back asking for the adjustment counselor. And we actually have one in place, at least part-time, that's being funded now with Title I monies, but we don't know that those Title I monies will be continuing, okay? And then there's a little, some guidance counselor with extra hours, that was the extra day. And, you know, as a related service, that, that was like a $2,000, $2,100 item. Some additional notes of what's continuing, we have foster special education teacher, you know, .5 and a sub-separate cohort, that's continuing. We implemented that, I think it was a couple of years ago. We were, maybe had some Title I funding, but it's in the operating budget now. The East Special Education Teacher, that came in last year, I believe, you know, so, and that's for pre-K full-day cohort, okay? And that will be continuing. This year, as I said twice at least already now, we have the adjustment counselor at the middle school, you know, part-time, which is being funded by Title I, but as we, we just don't know if the Title I money was going to be there. There's no Title I built into this budget, so that's a known person that we have in place and then there's a request for funding for the adjustment counselor in lieu of the Title I because we don't know whether we, you know, what our level of funding will be at this point in time. And these, these slides, you can't see all these up here and I apologize for that, and you can't see them all in the package because the package is probably too short, too small, but this whole presentation, all the slides will be on the website tomorrow. And welcome to print out, you know, large copies. And if you want, come down, I'll print you out a large copy there too. I just didn't want to kill all the trees at the, at the presentation. So, it's hard to see, but this is the special education breakdown from the original preliminary budget, all right? And I've had retirement and that it would be, actually be offset with a higher level teacher and it, because it was a .5, but we replaced it with a 1.0 and that's actually costing about $6,000. So, special education is a little bit higher, but this shows you the individual categories that, on that big screen sheet, okay? When you, when you, your first big sheet there, that budget, where you have regular ed and special ed, all this chart is, is those, that section of special ed and showing what the totals are. So, you know, general comments and, you know, here's like, we're talking about the multicolor budget right now. This budget's a, it's a net one, okay? Current preliminary request, what we're asking for is $54,810,860. And that's up 5.39% over the prior year. And this budget reflects offsets of $2,786,147 in sped offsets. And $1,572,835 regular ed offsets for a total of $4,358,982,000 in offsets. And the offsets are from grants, tuitions, fees, and they actually reduce the original gross budget by 7.4%, okay? Among the mandated costs that impacted the special education budget, you know, at 13, 148, up 4.46% and vocational education at 123,951. Okay, so voc is down 2.1, special ed's up 4.46. And those are mandated, we don't really have any say in those. There's also some HPS programs that are fully funded by fees, tuitions, revenues, et cetera, such as our Kids in Action, our food service, driver's ed. And then I just put a note here, just saying that Title I does not appear in this budget, right? So, I, we have the adjustment counselor being funded, but that doesn't appear in the budget because we just, Title I, we won't know, they could discontinue it. Actually, with IDA, we've actually had a drop from the previous year for, you know, into this year. So, Title I is one of those grants that you're just never sure what you're really going to get. And then some of the costs are partially offset by fees, all right? Such as athletics and student activities at the middle school and then also a full-day kindergarten program. This is, this is, this, this next chart, this shows where those offsets are and what the, what the form of those offsets are. So, the big ones in special education is the IDA grant and also the circuit breaker. So, circuit breaker here is up from the previous year. Your previous year was like 1.4 million, 200, 1.1,1,432,632. And this year, it's 1,781,419. That's the offset in 20, 20, which is, you know, some $340,000 more than the previous year, okay? And then we also have the IDA, which is slightly down from the previous year of 823 down to 771. So, you can see the individual components. We have also, there's some, there's a pre-K revolving in there for $220,000. On the regular education offsets, you have athletics is, is one of the biggest ones, 323,600, as is the full-day kindergarten, okay? So, full-day kindergarten, the offset for that is $856,055. Couple of weeks ago, the school committee has actually increased the tuition, anticipated tuition, or they actually approved the tuition for 2020. They increased it by a hundred dollars or about 2.74%. So, that tuition will be $3750, I believe, for 2020. And also, look, there's a couple of programs, like Kids in Action program. Kids in Action program has been participating or contributing to the operating budget for several years now, okay? To the tune of, we've increased that a couple of years back in 1617, we started with $112,000. Now, we're up to $167,000. So, on an annual basis, any revenues and, or net revenues that they create, you know, most of them will be directed to the, the operating budget in terms of monies that they may pay for renting property, for the bus transportation that we provide, for some heating, for some consensual, and also for some health insurances, okay? The, the number that I got up to was based on, okay, here, we, we made about this much money this year, okay? We have, we have a decent base there and that base is established so that we can continue this amount going forward, although if we have a recession or you have a significant drop in enrollment, I mean, that could drop a number by like $80,000 or more, you know, very, very quickly, you know, because the tuition's at an average of $4,000. If you lose 20 students, which is entirely possible, that's $80,000. If you lose more, it would be more. But I think that with the, with the base that we have, we should be good for a couple of years anyways, and I wouldn't anticipate just a steady downflow in that operation. So, I think that we're in a steady state to be able to continue that funding going forward of $167,000. School committee also did increase rates on Kids in Action, which is really, it's still a very competitive, we're, we're lower than other sort of daycare providers within the area and other solutions. So, it's still a very good value for residents. Food service is also a new account, so we've been making, being profitable there. We've got to a state where we're able to provide our infrastructure for food service, where we can replace our equipment. And then now also, we're starting to, you know, start to put offsets into the operating budget for similar type things, for the administration support they get, for the maintenance type support that they may get. And we would look at that account to continue to sort of, you know, fund all the equipment and stuff and determine, you know, if we have, determine on where the, where the revenues and the profitability is going to go by holding, we don't want to increase rates too much because we're still generally high for the area, but we want to maintain that profit level and continuously sort of increase those so that they become additional offsets to the operating budget to essentially pay for the services that we are providing, okay? So, anyways, that, that's a view of where the, the gross offsets and the, and the components are. There's also building revolving and here field revolving account, those typically get, may, field will get offset or help pay for some grounds type work. Building revolving account will help pay for some energy type things, typically heat or electricity, we may offset with those. So, just some general thoughts about the, the state of the plant and the infrastructure that we have. Areas requiring attention, you know, we have to remember that our high school is 20 years old now from the last remodel, which was back in 1999. So, you know, and we do have an article, which we'll talk about later for the clear-story windows, I think that's good. We're looking at the building and providing some, some fixes to the building that was reported in a recent NIAS report that we had. And the boilers, we've had boilers with multiple repairs, although the boilers with our new staff told that our boilers are repairable on an ongoing basis, so I don't anticipate any, you know, just sort of major boiler replacement in the next several years. But we do have 10 rooftop units that will need a replacement plan because those are coming up on 20 years. And we've been working on the long-range planning committee, we've been working on a master plan and giving a good look at the, the high school and cell school. And, you know, that those air handles will have to be replaced within the next 10 years, so we'll have some information built into our master plan on, you know, what our schools need. And then there's, there at the high school, we still need for a expanded health and wellness facility, okay? You know, we, we do have a little weight room and it's a good building, but I think that we need to kind of keep it updated and, you know, going forward. So, that's something that we're certainly, we want to look for, you know, over the next several years. Foster school, we, many of us are aware of the situation of foster school, and there is an article in here for some preventative maintenance that we'll discuss later. And the Plymouth River, so Plymouth River's a nice little school. I always said Plymouth River's a nice little school. I think that we need to remember that, you know, we have to keep that window project on, on the radar. I'm not suggesting that happens this year, but we certainly want to keep that because we have the plexiglass on the other side of the building, but otherwise, the building is just a nice little solid building, you know, a great, on a great lot for our kids. And the, we, we probably would want to do an SLI with the MSPA at some point for those windows and, you know, wouldn't recommend it this year because we have other fish to fry. But I think we want to make sure everybody keeps that on the radar because we're going to fix that school up. We want to make sure that's a good school. Plus too, the, the windows there aren't really energy efficient, so, you know, when paying electric, it's all electric heat. So, we'd actually get some cost savings, but the, the beauty would be that, that building could serve us for, you know, years to come. And then cell school and high school, we, both of those, we have going on an exterior and a mechanical evaluation because those are our oldest buildings, so we want to get, we're doing an evaluation to determine, you know, what is it that these buildings will need for the, over the next 10 years? What should we be thinking about? So, we can sort of package it all and inform the public and everybody about, you know, what we're, what we're going to need for those buildings. And then, of course, we still have building 179 and building 12 out there, which, you know, there'll be some, some words on the master plan about that too, once we kind of figure and flush that out of, you know, what we should be doing with those things over the next 10 years. From maintenance and custodian, the needs for fixed roof 20 budget, the personnel and operating funds, there's no, no request for personnel. I think we're absolutely right-sized now. I think this, I think we have an incredible staff, I think they're doing a great job. 28 custodians, five maintenance people, there's three supervisory, there's one administrative assistant. But the operating funds are up 11.3%, or about 40K in that category. And that's just because trades are getting incredibly expensive. It is just, you know, HVAC, electrical, elevator, plumbing, plumbing, plumbing is just, you know, going through the roof. We have hard water here, right? So, you know, it's, the fixtures are getting changed out, it's like, it's just incredibly expensive. So, it's $40,000, it's up 11 point, it's 11.3%. It's not the $40,000 that sticks out, it's 11.3%, but I think that with the staff that we have in place does an incredible job and they're looking to get the bang out of every buck that they get, so. So, and I think they're doing a good job. Yeah, so there it is, I said it all. No need to repeat. So, here's some, some views, you know, some charts, these are easy, easy slides to take a peek at, but this has got electricity, heat, utilities, maintenance and custodial services, custodial being the highest because that's all, all the personnel really. So, not a lot to say, but you can see the, the growth. Not extensive, but, you know, it grows basically on, I have some custodians, a few custodians that are on steps, you know? So, you're going to see them grow a little bit more than, you know, if, if they were all maxed out. But we got to keep in mind too, that as they're growing, that means it's fewer dollars, but looks like a higher percent versus if everybody was at the top. So, there's a constant flow like with that group too, because there's 33 of them ourselves. So, there's always some retirements and new people coming, coming in. Transportation, here's another success story, and we've done a lot of work over the years on reducing costs in this area too. We have the, the increase in the contract or the increase in the budget that you see is really due to, to de-refuel. But, you know, there may be a bright light on the horizon because oil prices have declined over the past, you know, month or so. Maybe they're climbing back up a little bit, but we just went into a new contract, North Fork County just got a new contract. So, we can kind of look and see, you know, does it make sense to sort of lock in for 2020 right now? You know, and maybe we'll save several cents a gallon on diesel, which is really for the whole town, not just for buses, and, and also on our 87 octane. You know, when we look at the number of gallons, we go through 84, 84,000, at least two contracts each of diesel and, and 87 octane, 84,000 gallons each. So, you know, if you're getting 10 or 20 cents off, that adds up to, you know, some good money. So, so I had a look at that and then we sort of pulled the trigger. We've also done that too on our gas bills, on the natural gas. Last year, I asked Sue and Tom if I could, you know, work with OSD to see if maybe we get on the OSD contract because we had been floating on our gas contract. And we, so we did lock in and overall from the town, you know, we should be saving about $40,000 for this year, 2019, on our overall therms cost. Because the, the net term was costing about $1.49. And with this new contract, we get it about 20 cents cheaper now. So, you know, there's a million therms, that number can add up as well. And the thing about that, it's, it's the OSD contract, and that contract actually comes up for renewal in 20, October of 2020. Excuse me, no, this October, October of 19 for the 2020 fiscal year. And since we got in late, we actually got a higher term rate. So, I think that when we renew in 2020, it should be even lower than what it is now. So, that could help benefit us. But the buses, we got, we went into the lease, we actually requesting another bus. We, we have the Metco grant, we have, we, last year, you folks, thank you for signing on for the purchase of the, another purchase lease of, and that was a three-year lease of a new big yellow bus so that we could provide the Metco elementary run for us and for Cohasset. So, Cohasset will contribute to us. They'll pay us $300 a run, what they were paying for a student. But we want to do the same thing now with the elementary. We have the experience, we know we can do it, it, at a lower cost and we can improve the quality of the service. So, in this year's budget, in the individual budget pages and in the, in the backup, you see that there's assumption that we get a new big yellow bus and we offset those costs with the Metco grant. And that should produce, it'll, it'll produce some savings, but those savings will be in the context of the Metco grant. So, it'll be more money we can spend on the Metco program and provide to those kids. The, the other 22 buses, I mean, they're doing great. They're, you know, we've been able to maintain, you know, the, the same rate. The repair rate is come, you know, better than what the budget has, although now we're three years old, so we'll have to replace tires and we'll have to replace brakes. But still, once we even do, because we have to provide 50% brakes and 50% of the, of the use of the tires when we return those, which will be, we're in the fourth year. So, 2020 will be the fourth year, 2021 will be the fifth year. So, we're sort of staggering those over the next couple of years. But mechanically, they're good. They came with a five-year extended warranty. We get towing, there's a location in Norton, Mass. I think we've done an incredible job holding the line on transportation costs, you know, significant reduction for the town. When we first went there, we projected it would save like three quarters of a million dollars over five years. And I think we're certainly on target to do that and perhaps better. So, we are going to ask for one more bus and ask you to do that signing again, if you would. But the article that I put forward is for a five-year because we can get even a cheaper rate than, than a three-year. And five years is plenty of time for the bus. They, they live well beyond the five years. And then also the proposal for special education minivans. So, so once we took over the maintenance of our buses and we learned about that, now we can do more things to, you know, lower the costs and manage our transportation costs better. So, now we're looking to do a similar thing for special ed when we have known runs that we can do as opposed to, you know, contract. There's some contractors, you could be paying $216 a day for transport. You know, we can certainly do that with, even with our contract rates and, you know, our benefits and our gas and our fuel and our leases, you know, we can do that significantly, significantly cheaper and provide a better quality service. So, that's transportation. Another pie chart, so here's a, this is a vision, so you're just seeing the way our budget overall breaks down. This is from the original number, okay? So, these numbers, it would change slightly because people are going to draw up, but you can see 84% of the budget is actually personnel, 14% is contracts, and, and 3% is the other. Okay? And the contracts in there, you get your energy in there as well, plus a lot of the contract services for maintenance. So, you know, the, the lion's share of the budget is, is personnel. For those that don't like a pie or you want to see how it's trended, you know, you, you have that, the, the one on the right over here is like 2019, 2020 says the same number. That represents a big blue is 84% and the, the other one's a 7%. But you can, this just gives you an idea of how it's trended over the past years. And what you can see is it's the same. Right? Essentially, essentially, it's, it's, it's the same. You know, the lion's share of the budget is always going to be personnel. Okay, so this is the central for change and things to watch, and hopefully I'm at my limit here. We have, you know, federal funding, IDA entitled one, those, those are going to be wild cards, especially, you know, IDA, that's a, that's a big grant for us. One year, you know, we had, two years ago, I think we had a million 23,000 dollars and last year it dropped down to, you know, 950,000 dollars. So, we don't know where it's going to be. So, state funding, so the governance budget came out, I think, and it, overall, when we look at our cherry sheets, Hingham revenues are up net of assessments really, about 205,000 dollars for the governor's budget. But there's also the, the Budget Review Commission. There's a couple of house bills out there that I just learned about today. And, you know, they're talking about trying to add a million dollars, a billion dollars to the foundation budget over the next seven years and, you know, show the individual goals that are being developed into this house budget. So, I don't think there'll be anything in place for 2020, aside from what we know. But, you know, there, there is movement, so maybe that, that there'll be some funding developing, hopefully, you know, within, you know, maybe in the 2021 budget. The, we're still going to watch over the next several weeks and, you know, March 1st, any personnel changes. The out of district tuition, so, you know, we could end up with, you know, more of those, people could move in, things could change. Or the OSD award rates, the OSD will set the rates, you know, they can come in a little bit below the 3% and, you know, we could have some adjustments there. Utilities and fuel pricing, I can take a look and see, you know, maybe we should lock in for 2020 if, if they're good rates. And the kindergarten enrollment, so we always have to watch those. If they're, we're projecting about 290, about the same number of sections. If, if it turns out that we're getting a little more volume than we anticipated, you know, we have the shipyard project there, we have the Alliance project, which seems to be going out like block, like blockbusters. And I know I have not thought a lot about that in this budget at all. But, so, we, we got to keep an eye on that. And, yeah, so that's the PRS and foster. And vocational school acceptances. What I know right now is I have one application, but we don't have any word of acceptances. And that is the last slide, so I'm happy to, we're all happy to ask any questions. Or if somebody wants to know more about the inclusion facilitators, I'm sure Suzanne would be glad to tell you about them. So, we can answer questions and I believe that's it. Yeah, that, that, that shouldn't be there.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Let me just go around the table. Colleagues, questions, comments, observations? Mary?
Sure. So, John, thank you for, thank you for an excellent presentation. And just also before we start, I just want to acknowledge both you and Dr. Labroua with, you know, we've, working on the budget and a lot of other things over the past few months, there's been a great deal of collaboration. And that's been very helpful and we've enjoyed that. And thank you. You know, Dr. Gallo, as a, as a parent and as a town employee, I'm so grateful for the example that you've set in what you do and in how you do it. Just very grateful. You know, with respect to the budget, and, and John, thank you, I, over the weekend, I had a chance to spend a good amount of time going through the budget because I like to do that. And I, I passed along some notes and thoughts and I appreciate the additional information which I've read. I appreciate the inclusion of some things into the presentation, which I think will help, you know, will help all of us. You know, I've read all of these documents and I would strongly suggest, especially for the advisory committee members, whether you're on the education subcommittee or not, really digging into this information is so helpful in understanding a, a difficult dynamic budget. I, I was making a few notes, I mean, it's a blind flash of the obvious, but kids are expensive. And Hingham parents have really high expectations. And I think it's worth noting that we have wonderful people who work for the town in, in all the different parts of this building. And I think it's also worth noting that in, in all the years we've been at this, I don't think the school department has come for reserve fund transfer. And, you know, while these are big numbers, I think we also ought to acknowledge that this is a very well-managed budget, which, which is, which is pretty dynamic. I think like we're seeing is that every request that every department brings forward for consideration is absolutely worthy. There's, there's no question, and I think, and I hope Hingham taxpayers take pride in the sense that everybody who works for this town is really using every dollar wisely. I think, you know, we, we had police sergeants in here interviewing and each, each one of them talked about a lot of the societal things that are going on, that are finding its way into town services. And certainly in education, you find that, the number of mental health issues and, and family issues and substance abuse issues that, that find their way because children are coming to school. So, you know, they're bringing their whole selves to school and not leaving, you know, leaving some of that behind. You know, as, as we go through the budget process, I guess what, you know, I'd just leave us with a couple of thoughts. You know, I, I'm going to leave the categorizing of the budget to advisory. You know, the, the school budget, the town budget, they're kind of, they look a little different. So, I'm going to leave it to, to the advisory committee to figure out kind of what's a mandate, what's a structural deficit, what's what. What I would ask us all to do is, you know, and, and, you know, to, to the school committee, you folks have really tough jobs, you work really hard, you do it really well. My hope as we go through this budget process is that we remember that we're all kind of wearing this big town hat. And, and I think sometimes, and look, I'm guilty of it myself sometimes, you know, you get so engrossed in the police budget that all of a sudden I'm, sort of think of myself as the advocate for the police department. And I got to sometimes stop myself and say, well, wait a minute. The whole community elected me and I got this big town hat on. And that means that I got to balance a lot of different things. And I actually would like to think that we can all come together in a collaborative fashion on this budget if we all kind of maintain that, you know, that town hat and that perspective. What I would say in particular to the, to the school committee, and, you know, John, you alluded to it, and I know we're going to talk about it in a few minutes. I think the foster school feasibility is a really big ask of the community. And I just, I, I want to make sure in particular that members of the school committee understand that, that what we're asking the town to do is to potentially forego a lot of money that we might get for the state, from the state. And, you know, we'll talk about the merits of that, but what I would just point out is that, is that if the town decides to walk away from that, it, it's, you know, a renovation or a building of a new school is not cheap, as John said. You know, we're, we're seeing it all over the place. And what that may do is affect the timing of other initiatives taking place in the town. And right now, we're at a point in our town's history where we got a lot of 50, 60-year-old buildings and, you know, we're loving them and we're taking care of them, but they're 50 and 60 years old and they're getting a lot of use. So, you know, as I'm thinking about this budget process too, I'm thinking about what are we asking the community for? And, and I just hope as we walk through this budget process, we're thinking of that. To me, the, the big capital projects out there are, are pretty significant. So, as, as we're looking at the budget, let's, you know, I, I, I hope we can all kind of keep that, keep that perspective. So, that's it for me.
Any comments?
Yeah, John, thanks very much. Dr. Gallo, Dr. Labroua, thanks for all of your hard work to bring this forward tonight. I, I have to say, unlike Mary, I would take this in like a fire hose when it first comes across the bow. And so, it, it takes a while, I think, to get kind of back engrossed in the numbers and the structure of the budget. But, John, I guess, I, I appreciate the, sort of the different portrayal of the information on different slides because I do think it, it helps me anyway, be able to characterize and analyze things differently. You know, I do have some specific questions, but I think I'll, I'll hold those for another time. One, one, I guess one question I will ask you is just to, both for my benefit and the , the audience's benefit, to just talk about how you, how you view a structural deficit. So, when I was reading this, I thought, oh, it's a program or a service you need to provide and you haven't been able to either afford to provide it in total or at all? Is that?
Well, the structural deficit, the way I thought about the structural deficit, it's, 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 it's a service or a function that we have not had or that, and that we vitally need. And it's, it's, you know, very, very important. You know, we, we've been, in central office, I mean, our jobs, they're, they're, sometimes they're not doable. And, you know, staffs have changed. So, you know, they, I mean, you know, from an HR perspective, this is, this is a role we absolutely need. I mean, it's different workforces coming in place today. And, you know, the, the workforce is also getting bigger. So, what I thought about that was it's, it's something that's in place that, or not in place, that's actually vital. So, we're looking at, this should have been in place ages ago, but it's not in place now. Similar, you know, with the, the lab program, it's like, we, we should have a program like this. There's no programs like this on the South Shore. So, you know, we should have it or there should be a consortium together so that, you know, a collaborative's doing it or, you know, we have a, a number of schools doing it. So, it's, it's one of those where it's, it's something that should be there that is not. That's the way I thought about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, if you look at the, you know, the health, the, the health, we've changed that graduation requirement, we did that several years ago. So, we need to make sure that we provide the service there so that we can make sure that the kids can in fact fulfill that requirement. And, you know, with the growing enrollment at the high school, that's something that should, should be there.
Right. And so, to that end, how have you been dealing then with the personnel function of the school department to date?
It is, it has been, it's been dot, it's been It is, it has been, it's been Dot, it's been Jamie, it's been me.
Which has been part of, part of central office.
It's been our secretaries or assistants. Um, you know, I mean, 'cause there's, there's a, many, many HR functions. I mean, you got fingerprinting, you got the queries, um, you got the course reimbursements, not to mention you got the hiring, and you got the FMLAs, and you got the, you know, other, you know, typical employee issues. Not to mention, you know, it seems as though, you know, from my perspective, I can't believe we're in the third year of the contract coming up here, because it seems like they just ended, right? Because, you know, the personnel issues are just, they're just very constant. And it keeps us from thinking and doing other things that we should really be focusing our attention on, because, you know, I think when we focus our attention, we can get a lot accomplished, a lot of good accomplished, and, and real, you know, economical, you know, prudent way, you know, which will benefit the community and, and everybody. If you can't find that time, you can't always, you know, take advantage of the things that you could take advantage of.
And, um, you know, I think one of the, one of the programs I do think that you've spent a lot of time thinking about is transportation. So, I, I am interested in this approach with the minivans, and, you know, I'm assuming you'd purchase them. You, you kinda anticipated some of my questions, so these, the vans would then also be available for other functions during the day when they're not on these runs, right?
Yes, yeah. And the, um, the proposal here is to lease them. So, and this proposal in here is like a three-year lease, but my warrant article is asking you to allow me to go into a five-year lease. 'Cause I think those minivans will be good for five years just as well as, you know, as the big buses would. And, and that's correct. So, they'd be more fuel-efficient, the cost of our drivers to get the, the kids there, you know, compared to what it would cost for a contract. And these are known costs. We know what, we know what it costs this year. So, you know, just using that same cost, we can say, hey, we can provide this service cheaper. And then, even though they're smaller vehicles, so they'd be more efficient, better gas mileage and stuff, we could, we deliver mail, right? Instead of being a 7D van would be delivering there. And, and you're right, they'd be available for other uses, and we will find good other economical uses for them that aren't wasteful. So, I, you know, and it's a cost savings. It saves us $13,000 on a conservative basis. So, you know, we had thought about doing that a couple of years, but we've bit off the, the big buses. And we know we have a model that, that makes that work, and we got a good management structure. Patrick does an incredible job. He's a, he's a great dispatch supervisor, or, you know, transportation supervisor, and knows a lot about the buses, and he, he runs a good ship. So, you know, we wanna take advantage of the people we have in place.
And, you know, one of the things, um, I think this time of year brings up is just kind of the, there's an art and a science to this budget process. This is part of the science today, but the, the art is some of the unknowns, I think, that you've identified on your sheet, as all that sort of flows together, anything from, you know, federal funding to the governor's budget. And to that end, I, I was wondering, when, when will you know, or when will you get some indication of, say, the Title I funding in particular? Not till July?
July, yeah, July.
So, that's not helpful.
So, it's, yeah, it doesn't help. It doesn't tell us what's happening up front, you know?
Yep.
So, that, it, it is a blind spot.
Okay. So, like I said, I have some other kind of more specific questions I'll try to put in a, a more articulate framework and, and send, send to you all. But I guess like Mary, you know, we started off the night tonight considering an article on targeted tax relief that would provide, potentially provide property tax relief to needy seniors in town who qualify for the circuit, state circuit breaker tax credit. And we would offer some percentage match. That initiative were to move forward by town meeting, wouldn't take effect until 2021. But, you know, I think we are on kind of both ends of the spectrum, trying to be mindful of folks in the community who, you know, for every dollar we include in these budgets, it's, it's, um, it's the community's financial responsibility. And, you know, I think it's, it's tough for a lot of families and a lot of individuals, and, you know, that was one opportunity I think we had to, to try to address a known need. And so, you know, we have this budget ask, we have some capital asks, you know, it's a, it's, it's a big lift in the end. And, you know, I look forward to working together over the next several weeks to, to get there.
Yeah, we're happy to answer. Any questions, anytime.
Great, thank you.
I have some questions as well, but I'm gonna save them. Although I do, I'm a little puzzled. I thought I heard you say you're gonna apply for some kind of state funding for the windows of Plymouth River School.
No, not this year, Paul.
Complaining it.
No, 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 no. That's just, I just, as I was saying, I was trying to give you a picture of what the state of our plant looks like, and that's, that's a project we should keep on our radar, not for this year, but, you know, as a community, we wanna keep that on the radar. For the windows of Plymouth River?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we wanna keep that on the radar, to, to have an SOI in some subsequent year so we can change those windows out. They're just plexiglass, and they're in the back of the building. I mean, you, you look, they did the windows when we had that, um, $7 million several years ago. They did the front window, so, you know, the, the front of the church looks good, you know, but the back of the window is just not, not as efficient. And, um, you know, the, they, they really do have to be replaced. And I think it's a, it's, my view in that building is, we can have that building serviceable and in good shape, could go another 20 years, but those windows aren't gonna make 20 years. So, we need to keep that on the radar. And the sooner we get it, the more efficient we'll become, and, um, you know, it's, and the cost is just getting, you know, higher too. So, you know, it's one of those things, at some point in the, in the future, not this year, not 20, not 2020, no.
Uh, Donna?
Before I open up my colleagues and lose my voice, Dot, I just wanna say thank you, you know, as a parent, as an AdCom member, as a member of the community, all these years, it goes, your dedication to our kids goes well beyond your career. I think it's been your life, and I wanna thank you for that. And I, I wanna acknowledge the hard work of the team that you have mentored and, and brought up to speed so well that they can keep balls in the air with one arm tied behind their backs. So, thank you for the, the work of your team also. Members of the advisory committee wanna ask questions at this point? We will have a, an additional hearing ourselves on the ed budget later on, but if you have questions right now? Apparently not.
All right, well, good. And why don't we thank the school department for its presentation? Appreciate the clarity and completeness of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll move on to the next issue.
We have their warrant articles. Oh, we have the SOI.
From the school committee is speaking today. You're doing all your articles.
Warrant articles.
You talking on that, or you just want us to take it up?
Um, I mean, I can just introduce it, but...
Don't you do that.
Do you need some water? Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda. Do we bid goodnight to the advisory committee? There's a statement of interest for the MSBA Foster School, and this requires a vote by the board. So...
So, there's some very specific language that was provided to us by the school department for this vote.
That was before us. And John might wanna speak to that language.
Yeah, um, similar to the past couple of years, so the MSBA does have a very prescribed language of a vote that both the school committee and the selectmen have to take in order to authorize the superintendent to file a statement of interest. Where, and this one being for Foster School, that would be a core program, and the date for this year for that submission is April 12th. So, a couple of weeks back, the school committee took that, and, and this is the same language that you had last year, really, which has to be, you know, we have to supplement this year's date, uh, change this year's date, um, and then authorize the superintendent, you know, and, you know, through me, which will be delegated to me to, you know, prepare that SOI and submit it. In April, it will require the signing of the chair and electronic signature of the chair, if you remember that last year, Mary.
Yep.
And, and of the school committee. So, the intention on the SOI would be to, I will wait until, you know, probably the week before it's due. And the reason for that is, so, if anything, anything else should happen to Foster School between now and, you know, April, all of that will be incorporated into the SOI so that they understand, you know, that we, we really do wanna, you know, have a solution to this building. So, we get as much information as possible. There's no benefit, I've been, I've been assured by the MSBA, there's no benefit to getting that application in early.
Okay.
Okay? They will wait until April 12th for everybody's application. So, um, I, you know, that's, so, in preparation of that, I just wanted the selectmen's, get the selectmen's vote on paper, because I'll have to get the minute, I'll have to get your vote, and then I'll have to get it certified. And I just wanna have all my paperwork together, because I have to send that to them, and I gotta receive that by April 12th. So, we're a little early, and, and I appreciate it if you could do it now.
So, John, just to, and, and, you know, I, I see that the Hingham Journal is here. So, we got, we got a couple things going on with Foster School. And, you know, before we kinda talk about this SOI, could, could you maybe just, you know, again, for the benefit of people watching, just kinda summarize the, the direction that you'd like to take with respect to Foster School? 'Cause with these two pieces, I think it could be, people could get easily confused.
Mm-hmm.
So, the plan is to submit a statement of interest for the upcoming funding round for the, for the MSBA.
That's correct.
Where we would hear...
So, we would, with the, it's, the, the plan would be to submit a 2019 SOI with the MSBA under their core program for Foster School, where we would actually get the results of that SOI if we were invited into the eligibility period in December of 2019.
So, that, we would like to apply again for consideration by the MSBA?
Yes.
I just, again...
The third time.
I think, I think we all know this, but for members of the community.
Yes.
So, and so, this is the third time. And I guess a, a question I have is, I know that, that members of the school building committee, members of the administration school committee, you've been doing a good job talking to the MSBA, to our state reps. Did we, did we get any feedback after being turned down the second time as to anything we could do to enhance our application? And, you know, did we get any feedback from them on why, why Hingham wasn't selected?
Well, I did make a call. So, and the feedback that I really got was that the, that the, our application was a good application. There was nothing wrong with the application, it was a very good application. The, the project was very much considered. But, at the end of the day, it turned out that they had, you know, the projects that they're doing now are larger projects. A lot of communities are taking down two schools and they're building one school. So, the, the projects are getting larger, they get high schools going, so, the, and their funding is limited. Typically, in previous years, I mean, this is the first year when I saw that thing come out, where they only did 12 projects, right? In previous years, they, that I looked, I think one year was, you know, 18, and I think the other year was 17, okay? And when I talked, I said, you know, why is it, why did you only pick 12? And the answer really was, is because the size and scale of all these projects are getting bigger. And probably, and also, they're getting more expensive, you know? So, there's just a, there's a limitation in funding they continuously talk about, you know, they're funded by one penny of the sales tax dollar, um, every sales tax dollar. And, you know, they, they were limited, but they said our application was strong, and they suggested that, you know, file again. You should file again. There was nothing wrong with our application.
And is, is there any sense that, you know, certainly, we don't, we don't wanna have a situation like we experienced several weeks ago, where the students had to be relocated? But will, will, will that incident and that information be reflected in this year's application?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, and, you know, and then other, other minor incidents we've had, you know? So, yeah, the, the building has, um, has someills and stuff, so, I mean, I think the, the relocation is a real significant event, you know? And, you know, where we, the boilers, the exhaust fans. So, we'll tell them about some of the major repairs and, and the types of monies we're spending, right? And, you know, the exhaust fans, that's $12,000 a job. And, you know, so...
Yep. And, and just a final question on the SOI, 'cause I, I know it kinda gets refreshed. One of the things, I mean, you touched on it in the budget, I think I've heard about it, but with, with some of the development in the shipyard corridor, you know, the number of students going into Foster School, it seems to me that as, as we're gonna see growth in an elementary school, it's most likely in Foster because of some of the development. So, has, you know, we've...
Plymouth River because of the...
And Plymouth River because of Broadstone Bear Cove. So, I guess in, in our SOI to Foster, have we, have we also reflected the fact that there's, there's an additional couple hundred units of housing in that area that, you know, that, that will lead to, I, I think, more enrollment pressure?
Yeah, that will absolutely be in it this year, Mary. I, it wasn't before, you know, because the, the project hadn't, it probably was permitted, they hadn't really started construction. All of a sudden, those things appeared. So, yeah, no, absolutely, that would be part of it. And then we'll also be able to, you know, have a good review of it as well by an agro textual firm that sort of knows the right language to try to incorporate whatever we can into it to make sure it says the right things relative to the building.
It would be a stronger point than we could've made before, when we only were looking at a construction project. We now have a fully...
Right.
...developed project and at least fully available for at least a rental.
Yep. And, and I'm not, I'm not even sure, but even, I know some of it is occupied, so, you know, you can even extrapolate if, if...
It'll all be occupied by the end of this month.
Yeah, so, so all of a sudden, then you'll, you'll have some hard data, and I think, you know, we, we also know that some of those units turn over, but, um, you know, I, I appreciate that you're looking at changes in Hingham that can strengthen our application, because it sounds like the, the competition for state funding is getting more intense as construction costs are going up, and, you know, when, when you have like a $200 million school, all of a sudden, you know, one, one high school equals four elementary schools. So, it's...
Right.
It's a little trickier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mary asked, update of census data and disruption to service, I think, are two important factors to, to try to incorporate going forward.
Yep. Absolutely, those will be incorporated.
Members from the public, comment, questions? Are we ready for a vote?
Mm-hmm.
Would you be so kind?
I'm really, oh, gosh, it's long.
I think you have to read it here, yes, I do think you have to read it.
So, I'm not gonna read this with as much gusto as Paul read Dr. Gallo's proclamation. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 5th, 2019, prior to the closing date, the Hingham Board of Selectment of Hingham, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form on or before April 12th, 2019, for the Foster Elementary School located at 55 Downer Avenue, Hingham, MAP ID 38-0-01, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. The building was built in 1951 and does not meet current code and significantly lacks environmental quality for natural lighting, artificial lighting, fresh air ventilation, and evenly distributed heating and cooling temperatures to enhance the educational environment. Classroom configuration does not allow for uninterrupted instruction. Several classrooms have no natural light. The building envelope and window systems are inefficient, and the steam heating distribution and electrical systems are failing due to deterioration. And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Hingham to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
All the fair?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Article Z. Foster article to amend feasibility study vote. Yep? Yes?
That's what I did, right? Yeah, that's what I have in my book. I think that's what this was.
John, do you think, again, just for the benefit of people watching who may not be aware, can you...
Yeah, yeah.
...tell us what the, the purpose here of this article is?
Yes. So, back in 2017, the community, the community took a vote to authorize... Yes. So, back in 2017, the community, the community took a vote to authorize spending of up to $750,000 for a feasibility study for the Foster School building. And along with that authorization of the feasibility study, there was a condition on it that the money would become available when the MSBA invited Hingham into, at the MSBA's eligibility period, which is, basically means they're inviting you into their program and they'll give you a certain amount of time to, you know, raise your money and get the appropriate votes and establish a building committee. At that time, back in 2017, we took this vote so that we could have this money ready to go upon being invited into the MSBA's eligibility period in order to save time. Because we wanted to make sure that the, the MSBA gives you nine months to go get your votes and to get your money. But, and with the state of the building, we didn't want to delay, and we wanted to be able to move right away. So, we procured that, we took that vote in, in April so that we'd have that money ready to go, hoping in a decision of December, I think of 2017, that we would get invited. And we, at that point, we were not invited. So, last year, we, we submitted for that. And that vote, that, that vote stands. It stands today. That vote is still there, which is saying we have $750,000 for a feasibility study upon being invited into the MSBA's eligibility period. So, this year, after we did an SOI again in 2018, in December of 2018, we learned from the MSBA that we were not invited into the eligibility period again. So, at this point, we're back in the, we just took the vote to say, let's do the SOI for the third time. Okay, so that authorizes me to file an SOI. What this article does, the Article Z now, is it, is a question to the town to amend the 2017 vote and to essentially remove the condition that we get invited into the eligibility period by the MSBA. And, and that would happen in the MSBA's 2019 SOI process. So, they'll give their decision presumably in, in December of 2019, or upon acceptance. So, if we're accepted into the eligibility period, then this, this vote would, would stand. Or if not, then the money would no longer be subject to being invited into the MSBA's eligibility period. It would be available for the school building committee to commence spending in 2019.
So, and again, I, I want to ask some of these questions because I, I think it's going to be really important at town meeting that, that the community understand what they're voting on.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to make sure, I know what I'm voting on.
Yeah, no, I'm all here.
So, so, so right now, the, the feasibility money can only be used if we're invited into the MSBA program. So, let's say that we go through the SOI process, and in the unfortunate case that the town is not selected in December, that means that the next day, the $750,000 would be available for the feasibility study to commence. And so, let me just ask a couple of questions, John, that, you know, we may or may not be able to answer. Do we know if, let's say that we went along the path of a feasibility study, paid for it ourselves, would that money be eligible for MSBA reimbursement if we got invited in, say, in year four? Do we, do we know that, or...
I think, I mean, you know, I, I don't know that. I think if, if you were, Ray Estes is here, and Ray is the vice chair of the building committee, and Ray knows that building, that MSBA, you know, more than from a legal context than, than from experience to having been the chair of the middle school building committee. So, if I could ask him to perhaps answer that question, that would be helpful. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you for being here. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, here as vice chair of the school building committee. So, short answer is, we're not sure.
Mm-hmm.
But we think there's a good chance it could be at least partially reimbursable.
Okay.
I think it depends on what the study encompasses, what it ends up leading to. I've had a lot of discussions about this, and no one can give me a straight answer.
Understandable.
Nobody in the state, no engineers, no designers. It's kind of a case-by-case situation...
Yep.
...basis.
Ray, if, so let's say, like, let's say that, that Hingham completed a feasibility study. How, how long do we envision? So, again, let's say we get, the MSBA says no in December. How long would it take, do we think, for Hingham to complete a feasibility study on its own?
Sure. Well, the, the process really isn't that different whether you work with the MSBA or you do it independently. And I've talked to a number of school districts who have done a number of projects independently because they simply couldn't wait for the MSBA. The, the difference in working with the MSBA is there's more hoops to jump through, and you do it following their modules and their procedures.
Sure.
If you think about the timing that we moved forward with the middle school project as an example, we authorized feasibility money in April town meeting of, what year was that? 2011. And then we had a special town meeting in October for funding of the full project construction.
For six months?
Yeah.
So...
Give or, give or take. And this is a smaller, this would be a smaller project, smaller scale.
So, and, and maybe this is also like a school committee question, because I'm just trying to think about this. So, let's say, MSBA says no to Hingham in December. Hingham initiates a feasibility study in January. It takes six months. Would the school committee envision applying for the MSBA a year from now if we were turned down a third time? In other words, while the feasibility, while the town-funded feasibility study was going on, would the school committee envision that John will be here a year from now asking us to refresh the SOI?
I think we would consider that, depending on how, you know, is it reimbursable, how, the size of the project?
But would you, but would you go, in other words, if they say no this third time, is it the school committee's intention to walk away from the MSBA or to give the MSBA another chance? Or, I don't know if you've talked about that.
We are at a critical point with this school. And we really need, we need to move. We will use, go for whatever MSBA resources we can. If we face that we have this feasibility study and it's non-reimbursable, would we want to continue with the MSBA and waste those dollars? The longer we wait on the project, the more expensive the project gets too. And, and the, and the more impacted our students at Foster School and our students across the entire district are impacted. This is an equity issue across the whole district. And when we have to relocate, if we have a problem with that building, as we have had, we relocate the students. The high school was disrupted. The entire district is disrupted. And those are the challenges we're facing now. You know, this project was identified in 2005. And then, two years ago, as John said, we moved ahead to establish the school building committee in advance and to apply for the MSBA and to get as prepared as we could. That's the, unfortunately, unfortunately, I, we really understand the challenges of the finances of this, but we are at a really critical point with this building.
So, and, and I'm not disagreeing with any, I just, again, I want to understand what your intention is, because I think people need to know what they're voting on. Because what it sounds like to me, and I'm kind of testing this, is that this is more than a vote for $750,000 for a feasibility study. This is, this is a vote to say to the school committee, we support your moving ahead on a 100% town-funded solution for Foster School. And again, I, I'm not saying that's a bad idea. It's a good idea. People need to know what they're voting. And so, is that, is that where the school committee is?
Yes.
And if there's a chance? So, so is it, so let's just hypothetically...
There's five of us here tonight. There's two others that weren't able to attend.
So, if, if the MSBA turns you down in December again, do you have any intention of submitting an SOI for a fourth time?
So... We haven't discussed that specifically because it's also a matter of whether those funds are reimbursable.
Wait, wait, wait a second. There's feasibility money, and there's money to build a school. And like, so, so, you know, I'm just thinking about this and saying, you know, I understand that if, if Hingham goes it alone in feasibility, we may or may not get that reimbursed. We may be, we may be on the hook for a whole $750,000. The bigger question for me is 35% on a school solution. So, a $40 million school, 35% is a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a $50 million solution, 35% is $17.5 million. So, so, I'm just wondering, are we, are we saying that if the MSBA turns Hingham down again, the school committee does not intend to submit an SOI for the fourth time to see if the MSBA will partner with us on the building of the solution, which is the, those are the way bigger dollars?
Mary, that question, that specific question was not asked or discussed.
Yeah, we have not discussed that.
But the general consensus among the school committee, what we did discuss was that we know time is of an essence, and this is our third go. And so, I think we need to have, we've started those discussions about what happens if we are denied a third time.
Yeah.
And we can't just put all our eggs in one basket and hope for the best that we're going to get in.
Sure. And again, I'm not, you know, I, I think you're in a very difficult spot. And, and, you know, I'm just trying to understand what it is we're asking for. Because, you know, sometimes in Hingham, I've seen this with other projects, where the suggestion is, well, let's just kind of put ourselves in the running to do something. And then all of a sudden, that vote is interpreted as the community is saying yes to the whole project. And I think it's really important that the voters know what they are saying yes to. Is, is this...
Are we voting this tonight?
No.
Can I just make one more statement, though? Because you did mention that we would be foregoing all of this money. And we did ask some questions, especially of Ray, who was very insightful. And one of the questions asked was, would it cost us necessarily more money as a town if we did pursue this without the MSBA? And that answer also was not very clear. We would have more control over the project and could make maybe even quicker and faster decisions that would save us money. So...
On the feasibility or on the end project?
On the end project. So, it's not, so those questions still need to be discussed, but it's not very clear that we're going to be foregoing a lot of money. Because going with the MSBA, they have certain requirements that we would have to fulfill as a town in order to receive those funds. And so, we would be tied to certain things. Like, Ray was talking about the hoops, and I'm sure he could give more insight on this as well.
Well, and I, I think what, what I remember from the other projects are that, you know, the, what, the way the MSBA does this is you settle on an enrollment number, and then they kind of have a formula that says, you know, if you have 500 kids, you have this many classrooms and this square footage. So, it's very like formula-driven, which I, I think as a taxpayer is a good thing because it helps convince the community that we're not overbuilding. And the MSBA says this is, this is kind of standard. I think, I, just speaking personally, walking away from a 30% reimbursement on a new or renovated Foster School, to me, is walking away from a lot of money. It's, it's money in the millions that, you know, I'm, I'm mindful that if we go that path, it will potentially delay other capital projects in the town. We've been trying to make room for Foster School, you know, kind of in our, in our financial planning. And that Foster School number just could get a heck of a lot bigger. So, again, that may be the right thing for the town to do. People just have to know what they're voting for. And, and I think for the school committee, and, you know, if you haven't had these discussions, I think you need to be prepared to tell the town what your intentions are with the respect to whether or not you intend to submit a fourth SOI. Because I, I expect you'll get that question. And I, I hope that you'll...
Well, you got it tonight.
Yeah. And, you know, it, you may need to take some time to come to consensus on that.
Well, and I can tell you that we have talked about that this is a really critical issue for the town financially. We understand that. We also know that it's at a really critical time for our students. And that if we don't have Foster School, then we have incremental costs as well of relocating students and of the delay, and all of those impacts of, you know, where are we going to put the kids? And what's the impact on their education? And we've been talking about this for a long time. And unfortunately, as you read in the SOI, we have critical issues with the building. And so, that's the other balance that we're facing. And so, yes, we've, we've thought about all the costs. But then, do we, and we talked about, if we spend $750,000, do we have to spend that again? So, and then, do we wait another year, another two years, that maybe we still don't get the money? So, we have been having those conversations of, the more you kick the can down the road, the costs go up, and do we spend our money twice? And we really feel that we're at such a critical point with the building and the risks in the building, and the risks of having to relocate the students and the staff. Unfortunately, it's come the time when, yeah, we have to make that hard decision. As Ray mentioned, that there are many other towns that are in the same, have been in the same boat with waiting for the MSBA, and they can't wait any longer.
Hey, Ray, just, I don't know if you know this, but I know you spend a lot of time on the MSBA and doing this. Do, do we know whether there have been other communities who have been in a similar circumstance? And, for example, they've, they funded a feasibility study on their own, and, you know, did they, do we know what's, do we have any intelligence from other communities that might be informative?
Is any anecdotal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, did they get reimbursed for their feasibility study? Did the MSBA make them do a second one?
It's a new program.
How did the school they built differ from what's the model? To the strength of a resub, is a resubmital a stronger application to the state agency?
So, I don't have any specific information about other districts in this particular situation. Because I think this is a very specific situation that we find ourselves in, where we've been turned down twice. We really thought we would be invited the first time. I mean, what I can say is, when I attended the school committee meeting a few weeks ago, and they discussed this at, at great length, the sense I got from everyone in the room was that, you know, let, let's give it another shot, third time, but we really can't wait beyond that. But the sense I got was, that didn't necessarily mean, and they didn't get into a full discussion about it, but it didn't necessarily mean that they would not consider resubmiting a fourth time or a fifth time. I think, you know, that potentially puts the focus on the feasibility money and whether or not that would be reimbursable if you ever did get invited. The, the thing that I would, would offer is, the building committee has already been able to do some work with some money that was made available from school committee capital, site investigative work that we did about a year and a half ago, and enrollment study that the school administration performed and that we assisted with. And I think those two things are key components of feasibility preparations.
Mm-hmm.
They don't include design necessarily. But as part of the site investigative work, we do know that we could cite a building, if there were going to be a new building, that does not fall in any environmental constraints, for instance. So, we have...
Wetlands is not an issue?
I'm sorry?
Wetlands isn't an issue there?
It, it... It, it, it's not an issue where we've been informed we could cite a building.
Flood, flood.
It's outside of the buffer.
Are you going to be on the Hill?
No.
No.
Yeah, we did do borings on the Hill to determine if we needed to dig into it a little bit, whether that would be. But we did other borings as well, if you know, behind the school where the blacktop is before it meets the grass. It's really that area before, in between the school currently and where the softball field is.
Would you be building within a buffer?
No.
Sure.
Yes, that footprint is outside of all buffers.
Ray, do you, again, with the, with the MSBA, do we have any sense of, if Hingham were to pursue a feasibility study on our own, do we have any sense of whether that weakens our application with the, like, with the MSBA? In other words, you know, does, does that, for the SOI that we just voted to submit, does Hingham authorizing its own feasibility study in any way impact our standing with the application that's going in?
I, I don't think it does. I haven't learned anything that tells me that that's, that's the case. I think the worst-case scenario is that they accept us and then we have to redo some work.
Sure.
And it might be an expenditure that we wouldn't, perhaps had to have had. But at this point, I don't know that we can, there's no way to guarantee that we'll be invited next year or the year after. And, you know, I think the, the point's been well made that there is, I mean, I was at the meeting at Foster a month or two ago, and there were probably 150 parents in, in that cafeteria. And I've heard personally from a lot of others since, and there's a great deal of concern about this. And as Liza mentioned, it's, it's something that was in the master plan in 2005. And obviously, the focus has, has shifted to other priorities over the years. But I, I think worst-case scenario is, it ends up being that additional time and, and perhaps a little bit more money has to be spent to go through the process in the way it's intended to be with the MSBA.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Why don't you, why don't you go to the podium so the folks at home can see who's up? Thanks, Ray.
Carlos da Silva, member of the school committee. So, that's a very good question, Mary. One of the things that we all know is that nothing gets built around here without a feasibility study. God forbid that something does happen between December 2020, December 2019, and, and the time that we are waiting for this feasibility study to be completed. Should that have been completed by then and something happens, at least we have a roadmap to follow. So, and by, let's say, having the $750,000 available in December of 2019 doesn't stop us from applying the fourth time if we choose to do so. Now, obviously, we would not know the result of that until December of 2020. So, but, you know, we have to have the discussion when time comes. Like Liza said, you know, the community have waited quite a while and they indicated loud and clear that they would love to see something done there. So, we would appreciate any support that we can get.
And I don't disagree with anything that's been said. And the, the uncertainty of all of this is, is obviously very difficult. And I realize it's something that, you know, we're all, we're all living with every day. I think, just from my perspective, the community needs to understand what they're voting on and what actions the school committee intends to take if town meeting authorizes the warrant article. We don't want any surprises on that. And so, I do think that people will want to know what the school committee's intention is if this, if we, if Hingham gets turned down a third time. You know, in some ways, what this is kind of doing is, it's accelerating things by four months. You know, if, in other words, and, and I think Carlos makes a good point, which is, we don't know how much time we have. Something could, we, we just don't know. But, you know, in, in some ways, I mean, when Michelle Ayer first called me about this, I said, well, why wouldn't you wait, wait and see what happens with the MSBA the next time? You find out in December of 19, you're either in or you're not. And you could submit a warrant article for town meeting in '20. I think the feeling of the school committee is that four-month period is a significant amount of time. You know, because I questioned Michelle and said, I, I think going into town meeting, if you were turned down three times, I think that's a stronger position than if, if you're turned down twice. And again, that's, that's your decision to make.
Well, this is saying we're turned down three times if, if we're going to get the money. So we are, you know, we're already, if we would get the money right away to get going on the project because time is of the essence.
Right.
But we will, we will also follow up on, we'll do some additional research with some towns that have gone on their own and get back to you on, on your questions, for sure.
At the end of the day, and look, this is a community issue. At the end of the day, we all have to assume, assume a certain amount of risk here. And we, we got to do that, we got to do that together. I think the more information, the better. I know, and, you know, we've gotten letters from Foster School parents who are genuinely concerned and if, I would, I would be as well. I guess what I would say to you is that remembering that in the Hingham community, you have a larger base of the community, you are asking members of the community to get behind a really big ask. So, I think people understanding that we need to do something about Foster School is a different degree of consensus than potentially walking away from the MSBA. I'm not sure that everybody agrees, who agrees with that first statement would agree with the second one.
And I would just like to add that from the 2005 master plan, we had identified three schools that needed to be built or rebuilt. East School, the middle school, and Foster School. And if we combine all three of those projects together and we don't get money from the MSBA, it's still 25% of state funding we've gotten on all three of those projects, if we look at it in that way. So, from that master plan, we've still had a generous contribution from the state. And we didn't get nothing. And we're making our best efforts at getting as much as we can. But we're also making our best efforts at educating the children of Hingham with educational excellence and innovation, as we've talked about earlier tonight. And we wholeheartedly understand the challenges. And so we, we are looking at everything. But we will try and answer some more of your questions tonight and see what we can get from other towns, too.
We're not going to vote on this tonight. We're on hour five, so we're going to keep moving. Article AA, Foster School extraordinarily, extraordinary maintenance capital.
Yes, this, this article is, is requested by the school committee in order to, it's read, you know, borrow, transfer from available funds in an amount of $350,000 to be expended under the direction of the school committee upon recommendation of the 2017 School Building Committee for the purpose of funding Foster Elementary School extraordinary maintenance capital needs of the existing school building or act on anything related thereto. I'm not sure which version you have, but did John already move the 2020 limit? Yes. So the intention of this is to provide a, a capital project account so that we can do some extraordinary maintenance for Foster. Two projects that I could give you an example of right, you know, right now would be to have our electrical switch, have our circuit breakers rebuilt in that 1951 switch. You know, we have quotes of that, that's like a $28,000 project. Also, I mean, you know, anticipation, we don't, I want to be clear, we don't expect this building to go down, right? We, I don't, not, not for a second do I think I'm going to have a problem with the building. However, what we do, you know, we, we know we had to do relocation and that was a day and we were able to get back up. But, you know, in the event that we did lose, you know, the electrical panel or in the event that we lost the boiler, we have a plan where we can actually drive, bringing a donkey boiler, okay, and hook it up to the steam lines and we could be back up and running in about two days. An electrical generator can also be brought in, but the way the building's structured right, set up right now, you can't do that in a couple of days. That would be more like a three-week issue. But for $55,000, a price, we can put a quick connect in there, okay, so that we could actually roll in a portable generator, which would be running on diesel outside the building. And it could provide the building with all the electricity it needs in order to operate. And we could do that within a couple of days as opposed to three weeks. So, the thought of this capital is really, you know, and then the other example I could give is the, these, this exhausto fan that, that failed, right? There's a lot of projects that were coming up with Foster and they're all running in the, really, you know, tens of thousands of dollars now. There's no more four-digit projects, they're all, you know, running six digits. So, you know, we would have this money available so that we could do that project and, and get it completed immediately. The, the amount of 350, it would go into a capital project, would be an up-to amount. And the thought is that I want to keep that there until we have the final solution with Foster. I can't say that, you know, if, if we go a year or two, we still don't have the building. I can't say that 350 is going to do it till that, we get that solution. You know, perhaps next year, I'd have to be in front of you again asking for an additional. Or maybe, you know, we, we would do it, we, we could certainly want to do those couple of projects and there's, and, and these would be big ones, not regular operating. I'm not talking about the regular small operating stuff, right? But these are sort of like unanticipated repairs that you, you wouldn't imagine you should have to do. So that would be in a capital project account and it would sit there until we get an ultimate solution for the building.
But you'd spend some of it initially. You've got a couple of things identified.
Oh, yes, I do, yes, I, I do, I do. I want to do that quick connect and I, we do have to get that circuit panel rebuilt. We have, there's a, these are like, it's a big switch. So these are like the, the big, big breakers. It's not like a little panel that you'd get within your house, okay? This is the big main switch panel. And the break is a very big, carrying lots of voltage to the other little mini panels. And we had, recently, we did an evaluation of that. And the evaluation itself cost like $8,000. And then, you know, they looked and they saw the state of it and they saw some breakers that, you know, a number of breakers, like, we had to replace two of them. Eight of them should be rebuilt.
Yep.
Okay? And, you know, not a bad idea to do that and it, it will prevent us from having a problem.
Sure.
Not that I think I'm going to have a problem, but I certainly want to do whatever I can, you know, at a low cost to prevent any problems in the future.
Well, the, the truth is that irrespective of Article Z, we need Foster School to be running for a couple more years. So what, if, you know, if we started on a solution tomorrow, so, you know, we kind of need to do this. John, when I was, when Michelle first called me about this, she talked about the possibility of, you know, she said, you know, I hope I'm getting this right, that, you know, she said, I think the total's about 350. She said, we may have some money in our operating budget at the end of the year that could, like, contribute towards doing this. What, what she and I talked about was, if, if we fund this from our fund balance, we fund this out of the rainy day fund, if, if the school department has any budget turnbacks at the end of the year, that goes to fund balance. So rather than trying to, you know, kind of pay for this out of a couple places, my suggestion was that if, if there's favorable action on this, that, you know, the school committee, school department's always good at, you know, turning back money when you can at the end of the year. I know that you have the discretion to spend that in some places, but with, with this on the docket, I, I just ask you to, you know, if, if there's a way that you can contribute to defray some of this, it would be helpful. I, I don't want you to be canceling programs or anything, but, you know, if.
Understood, yeah.
A little bit helps.
Sure, yeah. No, I'd be happy to do that, yes.
I'll entertain a motion to recommend favorable action on Article AA.
I, I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm down at this end of the table.
Go ahead.
Quick question is just AA and BB, I guess, you know. I'm just curious, John, why some of this stuff isn't built into your request before capital outlay? So, and, and maybe to Mary's point at all, it, it comes out in the wash a little bit to the extent that you're able to kick back into fund balance. But you've got your capital outlay request and you've identified particular capital projects here. Why isn't that part of the capital outlay request?
Right, well, so, I'm glad you asked that question, Karen, because.
Paul's not, but that's okay.
Was it, no, no, no. I mean, the, the reason why it's here is because Foster can absolutely kill my capital project, okay? It can kill my capital plan. I've got, I've got, you know, five other schools in addition to ancillary buildings such as the depot and building 179 or building 12 that, that needs to be, have work. And Foster could literally use up all my capital. And even during the course of a year. You know, we tried doing that, hey, here's unanticipated repairs and nobody goes for unanticipated repairs. So, my, you know, with that, it's like, I want to sort of take Foster off my capital list.
Yep.
So that, you know, we can.
I, I hear you, but you also seem like you identified a couple of concrete projects that potentially could have been part of that. And you've got the windows as well that, so what is, what is your capital request this year? The total amount of the capital request?
The capital request was 1.8 million.
Okay.
And last year, we got $1,230,000. So, you know, we, we know we're not going to get, you know, 1.8 million in from capital. There's just certain things that sort of, you know, and, and then, I mean, if we're, I don't want to take a lot of time talking about capital, but the capital process isn't working really that well. I mean, it is, but it isn't, okay? Because there's some really big, big items that are in our capital budget. I mean, you know, take, for example, technology expenses, you know. I mean, those should really be in the operating budget. They should be moved over to the operating budget because they're not going to go away. But every year, there's going to be that $400,000 or $500,000 with the technology that we need to just constantly keep the, the network and the technology structure going today. So we, we've got a few, we've got a few kinks in that. You know, I put together a five-year plan, but I, in my database, I have things going out even further than five years. You know, and it's, 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 it's a, you know, we, I think it's a good process because we communicate it, we talk with long-range planning, we go over all those projects and we sort of, you know, determine, hey, can we do this this year? Can we do that? We like to give some advance notice to everybody. It's like, oh, here's a brand-new thing. You know, for example, one, one thing is like we have a fire panel this year, $82,000. The one that we have is obsolete. It's got to be replaced, it's a life safety thing. That's a big item. When you think I'm only getting, you know, you know, I'm saying only getting 1.23, you know, $1,230,000. It takes the, you know, we, we manage a lot of property. So Foster can be a big draw on my property and on the property that we have to manage. So I wanted to kind of remove that essentially from the capital process and be able to do all these things. Because it really is extraordinary maintenance. That's what it is, it's extraordinary, it's not normal.
Yep, and, and I think in this case, I'm, I'm ready to move. But I guess I'd like to just continue this conversation because, you know, we've had some stuff on the town side that I think we've held back taking this approach because we've, we're trying to work within the capital project. And it doesn't, I, I'm not talking about this specific article, but I'm talking about just generally the, the kind of mindset and approach. And, you know, we're either going to all opt in and maybe we take a look at how we, you know, capital funding, we're really either going to all opt in and go through a process where, you know, we're evaluating the capital budget just like we evaluate the operating budget or, you know, or not. But I think, to me, we got to be playing by the same set of rules. And, you know, I, I have no issue with this, but I, that's been, that's been an overall issue for me that, you know, I'd just like to discuss, but I'm, I'm ready to.
Sure. Well, Karen, just one of the things, so, I mean, you talked about BB2 and the clear-story windows, which will be next, but these are, you know, if I, if I were to do clear-story windows, I get that and then I get half of my capital, I can't run the school system. I, I just can't do it. I just can't do it. I mean, I'll do the best I can, but I just can't, I can't stand here and tell you, hey, I can maintain these buildings. We can maintain these buildings. We can do what the taxpayer needs us to do with these buildings. I just can't do it. You know, because, so when it gets so big, you know, maybe it's a threshold level we got to, and, you know, but when they get big, like, you know, this one, it's nice to sort of take Foster sort of off the books, but the clear story at half a million dollars is just, you know, that, if I'm only getting 1.23, I can't do it on 500,000. So, maybe there's a level we got to set.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for favorable action on Article AA.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Article BB, funding high school clear-story window project.
So, if you recall, you may recall, but last year, we noticed that the clear-story windows, which are the windows surrounding the gym at the high school, and, you know, many taxpayers would have seen that if they went to town meeting, there's netting up there to protect those windows from actually falling in. You know, we examined the area, so the windows are 20, 30 years old, or some are original. And one set is 20 years old because we did one side of that back in 1999, and they're showing cracks, there's water in them. So, they're damaged and they need to be replaced. There was also some, you know, some cracks in the knee wall there, or a need-to-repoint sections of the knee wall. So, we were looking at that project last year, and the range of estimates that we could actually come up with were somewhere between $600,000 and $1 million. And, you know, where, so what we did is, instead of asking for that money in a big range like that, we opted for, to ask for, the taxpayers for $60,000 so that we could actually do an evaluation. We could get a design, you know, so that they could evaluate the structures surrounding. They could look at the roof line around there, and, because we said if the roof line is gone, then we should do those two, there's two air handles that are adjacent, we should do those as well. So, that evaluation came back, the roof is fine, and therefore, we didn't need to do the air handles. So, also, we were, that $60,000 was funding a design so that we could actually go out and get a bid, and we could get the price for what this project really is going to be, and we could bring it to the taxpayers in April 2019 meeting. So, we did that, and in December, we opened up these bids, and, you know, we were, the price of the bid, the lowest bid was, I think, $473,000, which was for GVW and East Boston Contractor, who our designer had, was familiar with, and a good quality provider, able to do the job, and they had done all the work with them. So, they seemed to be a good contractor. So, that, and the 550 came up, we're requesting $550,000 because there should be a construction contingency on that. So, there's a 20%, and the thought would be that this would be, this article would be coming from another fund. So, it's phrased to say up to $550,000. I don't think it'll go that high. You know, the construction contingency, maybe it'll only be 5%, maybe it'll be 10%. It's just one of those things where the designer said, "Oh, well, you could probably do 10%." And, you know, then something might happen, and it would need more money. So, that's where the $550,000 came from. So, this article is really asking if the town will raise an appropriate borrower transfer from available funds in an amount of $550,160 for the purpose of replacing the clear-story windows and completing other work related to this project at Hingham High School or act on anything relating thereto. So, that's the, that's the request, and we would expect it to be less than that amount of $550,000.
You know, we spent time on this last year. I think this was a responsible approach, and I'm ready to vote. I'm good.
Motion.
I move favorable action on Article BB, funding for the high school clear-story window project.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Article CC.
So, the list article, and I hope, this one is really to, it asks the town if they will allow, authorize the school committee to enter into a lease for five years, for up to five years, for that big yellow bus that I showed in the budget, and also the special education vans that I showed in the budget. And the Chapter 30B allows us to enter into three-year leases, but with a majority vote approval by the town, we can actually enter into five-year leases. And I think from an operating standpoint, that would lower our overall operating costs. The assets won't be used up, they'll still be valuable to us, and they won't cause us any undue expense. So, I'm looking to enter into these five-year leases so we can lower the operating costs.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article CC.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
John, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Good work.
Good job, John.
Thanks, everybody.
Will you adjourn here or outside?
We'll adjourn outside.
Okay.
School committee, always good seeing the school committee.
Always good to see you all.
Are you sure about that?
Dr. Gallo, pleasure to see you back. All right, we get another vote.
Want to do this?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Robert Mansfield as a special police officer effective February 11, 2019.
Second.
I had the pleasure of wishing Sergeant Mansfield well as he left the department after 40 years on the job this afternoon. So, Bob, all the best to you, my man. Pleasure working with you. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have selectmen reports, and we will start with the Assistant Town Administrator. Okay, Thomas?
I have 15 things on my-
I'm going to get a refill on my water then.
See you in the morning.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Karen?
I had 15 things, but I crossed them off.
Birthday candles on the cake, have melted?
Yeah, they're all gone.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I'll be brief. It's late. We're just about an hour five. But we learned that Edward Lewicki has left this world for another, and it wouldn't be appropriate for that to happen without the board recognizing his significant contributions to the community as well as the country. Ed Lewicki served in the Army during the Second World War. He was in the European Theater. And following his experience there, he remained in the service, eventually retiring or leaving it as a lieutenant colonel. And I do know that he taught at West Point, and focusing on his contribution to the town of Hingham. He and his wife, Virginia, parents of five children, I seem to recall them living on East Gate Lane for a long time. But he served three terms on the school committee and three terms on the Board of Selectmen. And I had the pleasure of being before him as a police officer in an interview capacity myself in the 80s. He was one of the three selectmen who was on the board when the town celebrated and marked its 375th. And I always found Mr. Lewicki to be a true gentleman, dedicated public servant, and always trying to do what he felt was in the best interest of the town. So, to the Lewicki family, the board as a whole extends its condolences and sympathy, but more importantly, its thanks to your father's service to this town. It added to the fabric that we enjoy today. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn and wish you good night.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Night, everyone. Thank-